Hi, it's Brendan from Crane Appliance. Since 1983, our goal as a family-owned company has been simple: to give our neighbors on the Cape and Islands a great shopping experience. Rest easy knowing our professional team will listen to your needs and help you pick the perfect appliances for your home. At Crane Appliance, we know how difficult appliance shopping can be. Our team is here for you. Crane Appliance, we call the Cape and Islands home.
Carlson Printing, (508) 548-7303. Our email address is carsonprinting@al.com. Carlson Printing, for all your printing needs. John's Liquor Store, 729 Main Street, Falmouth, (508) 548-2287.
Good morning. I'd like to open the meeting of the Falmouth Select Board. It is Sunday, December 7th. It is exactly 8:01. We are having a workshop meeting with a presenter today, and I'd like to begin the meeting by asking you to join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
What did I say, Monday?
She said Saturday.
Oh, I'm sorry. It was Wednesday.
And it will live in it for me.
I've been corrected. It is Saturday. All right, at your seats, you should have a couple of documents. You should have a case study, a copy of the Falmouth Committee Handbook with Appendix D, the liaison policy. You should have the Code of Conduct, and you should have two org charts. In preparation for this meeting, you had a copy of the Massachusetts Select Board Handbook sent to you, and you had a copy of our presenter, Bill Sinott's biography. So I would like to introduce Bill Sinott and welcome him here to Falmouth and ask him to take it away.
Thank you, Nancy. Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
Relax. This'll be a very casual discussion. I welcome feedback. Don't wait for a question portion of the program because you won't find one. The entire program is interactive, so please feel free to chime in or ask a question or make a statement. The whole idea of this presentation is to make you better selectmen, not through what I'm going to instruct you. You know, there was a famous English satirist in the 18th century named Samuel Johnson, and he said something that stood the test of time. He says, "People," at the time, he said, "men, don't need so much to be instructed as they do to be reminded." And a lot of what we're going to be covering today are things, in fact, most of it, will be things that you're familiar with, that you have knowledge of, but you need to be reminded of. And one of those things is the value of public service. Now, let me just tell you, if you look at my bio, your first reaction is going to be, "This guy can't hold a job." You know, I mean, I've done a lot of different things. I've been very fortunate and blessed to have some great bosses and some great opportunities. But what the biography does not tell you, and by the way, I'm obliged to give you this disclaimer, that anything I say to you today is not attorney-client privileged, and we do not have an attorney-client relationship. This is for training purposes only. And this next one should come with a trigger warning before you have to look at that picture, but you're stuck with it for a moment at least. What isn't in my bio is, I'm a Boston Irish kid. I mean, I grew up in the city of Boston. I live two houses away from the house I grew up in, where my mom and dad were, you know, until they passed away some time ago. But my four little girls sat napping, popping 90 feet away, and that's about as Boston Irish as you can get. But when I was growing up, we were surrounded by politics. My dad was the press secretary for John Collins, a two-term mayor of Boston in the early '60s. He was the last of the city censors. He was the "Banned in Boston" guy, and it was not uncommon for my friends to want to go up to my father's office because he had autographed photographs of some of the world-famous strippers that would perform at the old Howard Lounge, like Anne Corio and Angela the Upside-Down Girl. I'll leave that to your own imagination as to how she got that name. But, you know, it was a different era, and politics just kind of embraced us. My house, like so many houses, had the shrine, the photo of JFK, and sometimes JFK and Jackie, and that was typically in the front hall or a household place in the house. And JFK was a presence for all of us. And the cardinal sin in my household was not voting. My mother and father would bring us little ones into the voting booth. I don't even know if you can still do that. I hope you can, because it made such an impression on my three brothers and I that this was important, you know? And when that curtain shut, you felt like you were doing something very momentous, very significant. And we were, and my folks were. And you hope that at least that feeling carries on, not with everybody, but with a lot of people, because you want people to understand that it's important, and you want them to understand it's important because you want them to participate. I joined the Marine Corps because I felt that call to service, and I had wonderful three decades of active and reserve service, and felt like it was something important. I then got off active duty, stayed in the reserves, and I was an Assistant District Attorney in Norfolk County. A guy named Bill Delahunt was my DA back in the day, in the late mid-'80s, I would say, 1985 to 1990. And then I became an Assistant U.S. Attorney and prosecuted organized crime and drug trafficking cases. And, you know, that was about as much fun as a lawyer can have. You know, we had great cases, great opponents, you know, some real dogfights, but you understood that you were part of the system. You appreciated the fact that the folks on the other side were playing an important role in the system. And I think nowadays, we don't have enough appreciation for how that advocacy role, whether it's in government or in the court system, is so important. You know, I may not have liked the things that a particular defendant did, but I always saw myself as a professional. I always tried to teach the defendant, to treat the defendants with courtesy, to treat their families with courtesy, and to treat their lawyers with courtesy, because that makes the system better. At some point, I, in fact, I remember it, I came back from military duty overseas. I think I'd been in Rota, Spain, for three weeks on a reserve assignment. Came back, got a phone call from a couple of friends of mine who were very experienced politicos, and they said, "Bill, I know you love your job at the U.S. Attorney's Office, but Joe Mokley just passed away while you were gone, and they're going to have a special election to fill his seat. You should run for it." I said, "I was thinking about running for DA at some point," but they said, "Well, you know, you've been an anonymous fed for years. This'll get your name out there and, you know, be a good experience for you." And it was. It was the only congressional election in the country because it was a special, and Joe, for those of you that are familiar with him, Joe Mokley, he was a family friend, but just an iconic figure. South Boston Democrat, lied to join the Navy at the age of 16 and served in the Pacific. You know, the old breed, then came back and was a state rep, a state senator, and then a congressman. He knew how to play hardball, but he also knew how to build consensus and bring people together. That federal courthouse in Boston is a monument to him. It's the Mokley Courthouse, but it's also a monument to his influence because every brick in that courthouse, and it's a brick courthouse, which you don't see very often, was put in there by the unions, the Bricklayers Union, that had supported Joe throughout his career. So, and I said, "Let me give it some thought," you know, and then I said, "You know, I'm going to do it. I'm going to run." I left the U.S. Attorney's Office on shorter notice than I would have loved, because I would have loved to have, you know, had the proper pass downs of my files and all of that. But I left, and I jumped into what, at that point, was a nine-week special election for the ninth, the ninth congressional district, as it was then. It's no longer the ninth with redistricting, and the whole district has changed a little bit. It was fascinating. You know, because we're the only election going on, we had 20 televised debates and, you know, lots of attention, lots of press, and I was completely clueless. You know, they'd ask a question of myself, and there were, I think, seven Republicans, including Democrats, including four state senators, and there were another three or four Republicans running, but they'd combine these debates, so there'd typically be about 10 of us at these debates. And they'd ask me a question where I'd have a minute and a half to answer, and I'd give a very direct, honest answer in 25 seconds, and then I'd stop. And the other candidates would look at me, and then they'd jump in and start giving their stump speeches. And I learned after a couple of these debates, that's what you did. You give your stump speech. You know, no matter what the question was, you talk about what you want to talk about after a perfunctory, you know, addressing of the particular question. But enjoyed it immensely, you know, a great experience, became good friends with the eventual winner. I mean, I was the ultimate long shot in this thing. I think I came in fifth behind the four state senators, but enjoyed it and thought, you know, this is something special. And as we headed towards Election Day, I knew that, you know, I wasn't going to get elected, but I, you know, I wanted to do things the right way. So I voted on that September morning and came back to my headquarters. A couple of my folks were there, and I called up a city councilor that was a high school classmate of mine, and I said, "Steve, what do I do now?" And he says, "Well, you go to the polling places, and you shake hands of the people that are coming in." I said, "Okay." I said, "Any particular place?" He says, "Yeah, go to the places where you're most likely to get votes, because you want to, you know, you really want to turn them out, and those are the people who seeing you is going to remind them who you are, and they're going to say, 'Maybe I'll give Senator a vote instead of Lynch, or instead of, you know, this state senator, or this other individual.'" So I was about to leave to go to the first location, which was formerly my elementary school, now an archives, when the woman in the realty office next to us came in and said, "Did you guys hear?" I said, "What are you talking about?" "Some idiot just drove his plane into the World Trade Center." So we turned on the TV and, you know, gray, black, and white, and we said, "Oh, my God, what a knucklehead." And then we saw another one get hit. And everybody just went quiet. You know, at that point, there were probably four or five of us in the office, and everybody was stunned. I mean, you know, the election for the ninth took a distant backseat to what was going through everybody's mind. And the word came that the Secretary of State, you know, Bill Galvin, sometimes known as the Prince of Darkness, would cancel that election because, you know, it was just going to be so difficult to do that with the mental state that everybody was in. But, so, you know, we had probably an hour there. We weren't sure what was going to happen, so I did whatever Boston Irish Catholic does. I went to Mass, you know? And it was full of people that just wouldn't typically be there at 8 o'clock on a Tuesday morning because they just didn't know what to do. And I left there, and I went to the Hemingway School, and the Lynch's guy was an old friend of mine. His kids went to the parochial school that my kids went to and that my wife was principal of. So Tony and I had a, you know, great conversation. You can imagine what most of the talk was about. Turnout was supposed to be very low that day, and ended up being higher than expected. But it was just an incredible scene where we're standing by the side entrance of the Hemingway School, what used to be the Hemingway School, and people are driving up, and you can hear their radios playing. And all the radios in the cars are playing the same, the World Trade Center's been attacked. Pentagon has been attacked. Where is the next attack going to come from? And people were getting out of their cars, and they just had, you know, I mean, a lot of them were pale and distraught, but most of them had a look of determination. And I suspect a lot of people came up and voted that wouldn't have in a, you know, special election that day because they just wanted to do something. And at one point, I said to Tony, I said, "Tony, I can't believe this. I just got this remembrance, this memory of when I was in second grade, and I was sitting in a classroom over on that side of the building. Mr. Sessa was my teacher, and the principal walked in and whispered something in her ear, and she just started crying, sobbing. And then she said, "The President has been shot. President Kennedy has been shot." And of course, you know, we're five, six years old. We, you know, we knew who the President was. I knew who he was because I looked at his picture every time I came through my door, but we weren't sure what that really meant. And I can remember walking out that same door that Tony and I were standing at, walking towards my home, which was just a five-minute walk away, and hearing the transistor radios playing out of people's windows, and passing people that were distraught, crying, sobbing, or angry. And I said to Tony, I said, "This is just, these are two parts of my life coming together in a way that I would never have wanted them to," but I said, "There's this tragic symmetry to all of that." You know, most of you have seen this photograph of John John saluting at his father's funeral procession. You know, tragic, tragic moment. You know, for those of us of a certain generation, that's one of those things that you'll always remember where you were. You'll always remember how you felt, much like 9/11.
I remember standing there, watching the TV, my mom sitting on the coffee table crying. I'm the same age as him.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I'm almost 67, and, you know, I mean, I'll never forget it, and I'll never forget that moment in my headquarters, watching that second tower get hit. But the symmetry continues because Kennedy, you know, for all the scandal that's been revealed, and affairs, and things like that, he was an inspirational leader. He knew how to make people feel like government was important, that patriotism was important, that there was a mission to be performed. And one of the things he said, you know, you've heard him, his quote of, you know, "Ask not what your country can do for you, ask what you can do for your country." Another quote he made that's relevant to you guys is, he says, "Government is not a spectator sport. It requires your participation." But this quote has always resonated with me, especially as I think about, you know, those two book-ended tragic events. "To whom much is given, much is required." And he didn't originate that. I think it first appeared in the Gospel of Luke in the New Testament. And, you know, it wasn't exactly those words, but it was pretty close to it. But it's got a biblical origin, and JFK knew a momentous phrase when he heard it, and he regularly would say this. And of course, he was a child of privilege, and he understood that that was going to be something that people would reference, so, you know, he made a virtue of necessity and used that as a tagline for how he felt not only he and his family should conduct themselves, but how Americans should conduct themselves. You know, and as I think about that expression, you know, calls to me things that you should be feeling, and that maybe you don't need to be instructed on, but you need to be reminded, in the words of Samuel Johnson, that what you're doing is very special. And it's very difficult nowadays because there's a lot of conflicting forces at work, and you guys experience them on probably a regular basis during meetings and outside of meetings, where there's an anger, there's a division, that is not an easy thing to be a leader in that environment. But you need to understand, you're doing something special. You should have pride in that. But there's also a responsibility that comes with that, you know, "Much is required." And there needs to be an awareness of how to best do your job, and we'll talk more about that later. But that awareness of where you fit into the governmental structure of select boards in general, but governance on a larger scale, is critical because what you do is very, very And I've got this here because what I'd like to do is just, you know, you've heard my too-long origin story about my interest in public service, but, you know, as part of reminding you, you know, of what you do, I'd like to ask each of you, and I'll begin with Nancy, you know, what brought you into public service? And if I could just follow that up by saying, you know, what about public service inspires you, and what frustrates the hell out of you?
Okay.
Not to put you on the spot.
Yeah, I guess so.
And no pointing the finger at anybody in the room.
Exactly. So my background was in education. I retired as a superintendent of schools, which in itself is a bit of a political, difficult job, and serving a board. And I thought, geez, well, what will I do next? And I thought, well, I'd like to get into government. I'd like to continue to serve Falmouth. And so that was sort of inspiring, and getting out there and talking to people, and finding out what their concerns about the town were. And I thought, "Oh, I can do this." The frustrating part, A, I had no idea what I was getting into, and B, trying to make any sort of change is really difficult because, you know, it's different from being a superintendent because you work with the board, you have to have the community's interests, like, right here all the time, and there are varying interests and varying needs in this town. And so trying to move things along can be really difficult.
Yep. Okay. Heather, you're the newbie.
I'm the newbie.
You've got the battle scars already, I'm sure.
Okay, trying to keep the origin story brief. But I'll still go a ways back. Both my parents were educators. My father was in public media. My husband and I, both of our careers, well, his side of the family, his mom was a teacher, his father was career civil service. And so I think both our careers have been entirely in the nonprofit sector, so some aspect of public service has been very much a part of our lives for both of us our entire lives. And your story about taking kids into the booth, I can tell you, you can still take kids into the voting booth because my youngest is 12, and since we don't vote in the schools anymore, he doesn't want to go in the booth anymore since he's at school, but they've all done that. And I was in journalism, started in science, was in journalism, and the whole reason I went into science originally was in not understanding what you're getting into. I went into science because I was inspired by Chaut Housto and Jane Goodall, and I wanted to save the oceans and save the environment. I got into science and went, "Hang on, then just study it. They don't save it. All right, I'll do journalism. I'll tell these stories. I'll try to get people activated." And I was doing that, and I was learning a lot, but didn't necessarily feel like that was connecting to actually doing something. And so left journalism to work at a nonprofit that works on climate issues. And then first step into public service in Falmouth was actually friends asked me to run for the school committee, because I have three kids in the district who have been doing PTOs, all of that.
Those damn kids drag us into everything, don't they?
Well, the thing was, I got there, and I wasn't sure how it would feel because my dad, having been in public media and having been in journalism my entire life, I'd been a voter, absolutely, but had never been allowed to voice political opinions at all. No signs, no stickers, no donations, no nothing.
Wow.
And so it was a real jump. And I got onto the school committee and loved it and realized that where my, I have a personal passion for education, but where more of my expertise is, I thought, could be of use to the whole town, so.
Excellent. What inspires you about what you're doing now for the town, and what frustrates you?
Two sides of the same coin, and Nancy, to your point, change is hard, but I've only been on the board six months, and I feel like maybe it's the, like, being new and not entirely knowing what to expect. I'm able to celebrate the small steps, and I do see opportunities for change and progress. But they're small ones. It's incremental.
But they're wins.
Right. They're the little wins, and so it's frustrating, and also there is opportunity for wins there.
Yeah, there's progress there. Good, good. Speaking of battle scars, Town Manager's Office has a lot of them. Why don't you tell us how you got into government?
Sure. So the Kennedy quote definitely resonates with me. "To whom much is given, much is required." So I grew up very comfortably, but my parents did not. My father's a Holocaust survivor. My mother's a second-generation Greek immigrant. And so it was sort of part of our culture, was very much a work-hard culture and a real awareness of the privilege that we had, because our family hadn't had it for long. And then it was sort of reinforced as an undergrad because I went to college in a conservative, you know, early '80s where most of the students were, you know, I went to Cornell's, and most of the students were about making, you know, making as much money as they could, and I'm a contrarian, so of course I wanted to do the opposite of that. And found a, you know, group of like-minded folks who had that same mindset. So that's what brought me here. And, yeah, I mean, I love the fact that every day I'm going to work, and it's not for me, it's not for corporate profit, it's for the entire community. It's not always as glamorous as it sounds at a high level. It can be very frustrating and slow. But at this, you know, in this sort of time that we are in, it's, I feel a bit like we're in the breach in defending something really important that's really threatened by the, you know, the lack of civility and trust in government.
Yeah, I think you've got to keep that vision of why you're doing it forefront because it's easy to lose it in the midst of hostility and division and sometimes helping out antagonism. Yeah. Great, thanks. Doug?
So I'm a single child of a single parent. My dad was a career Marine, but he was a bit of a hard ass, and when my parents got divorced at three, he went to Florida, never came back. My mom passed when I was 16. I ended up going to the Navy because I had nothing else going for me. When I came back, I traveled, first I traveled a little bit, then I came back and I worked at the diner, because my background had been in restaurants when I was a kid. My mom was a schoolteacher and also a waitress, so I got the job dishwasher. So I started a business. I worked in construction for a few years, and then I started my business in 1985. I got married in '87, had a daughter in '88. And when my daughter was growing up, I started to volunteer in coaching with rec league, softball, and basketball. And that was the first time I started to really become involved in community, because I'd never really paid attention. So after a few years of being more... of being more involved, I started to pay attention to stuff. And we formulated the East Falmouth Building Association in 2003. And we had some stuff that we wanted to do. And one of those was getting sidewalks from seacoast shores to Kenyans, because a lot of people were walking, sending their kids to go get milk and bread and eggs. There was no sidewalk. It was very dangerous. So I was coming into the select board office and leaving notes and letters for the select board. We need help. We want sidewalks. And they weren't paying any attention. And I was getting kind of mad. So finally, we did a petition, and we put a petition, we, the people of East Falmouth want a sidewalk. And we just put it at the Cumberland Farms, Kenyans, and one other store, the old 7-Eleven, Tedeschi's or whatever it is. And we got like 780 signatures in a weekend, because the timeline was coming down. The contract was already awarded to Lawrence and Lynch, and they were going to do this repaving project with no sidewalk. So we faxed, I faxed the petition over to Bernard McCourt, the Tonkin DPW, the Highway Department, the Mass Highway. And he acknowledged it right away. And he goes, I have your petition here. And I want you to know, we're going to take it seriously. And I said, okay, good. So within like a week, they sent the DPW Highway Department crew down to look at it. And I got in the truck with the Lawrence and Lynch guy, Kip, Kip Diggs, who is a state rep now. He worked at Lawrence and Lynch at the time. So he and I drive that one-mile trip. And he goes, you know what? We do need a sidewalk here. And they all agreed. So within like three weeks, the Highway Department said, we agree with you. We're going to add it. It was a million dollars for the curb. The repaving project was only a million dollars. And they added a million dollars to a million-dollar project. And we were like, you know, we can get stuff done if we really stick together. So that started to make me start to pay more attention to town stuff, and but not really get involved, but just pay more attention. And then when they repaved Main Street, they did that big project where they did the bump outs and moved the telephone poles behind the stores. I started paying attention to that, because I make construction. And I noticed that, I, I said, it looks like they're not going to take out the curbs. And the curbs, as we know, are all too low. So I went into Peter Boyer's office, and I said, who's in charge of that road project? And he says, I am. I said, well, those curbs are too low, aren't they? He goes, well, that's not in the contract. And I went, I said, well, you better add it. And he was like, who are you? What are you talking about? And I was like, I'm just a guy that lives in East Falmouth, but I see that this is something that you should be fixing. And it never got fixed. And also, that contractor was supposed to put in sand-toned concrete on those sidewalks. And he got out of that, too, because he said there was too much utilities under the sidewalk. But when you do a utility, when you do a sidewalk project, you own what's under there. So I saw these things happening, and I wasn't happy with it. And I saw they put the blue stone shale. It was all crooked, and it's always been a problem, everything. So I started to get involved, and I volunteered to be on the town building committee, thinking that I was going to have some purview over all kinds of stuff. But we've had a very limited purview over certain projects. That was frustrating. Then I got onto town meeting, and I started to pay more attention to everything. And then little by little, I got involved. I went in the housing trust, and I did more and more. But I felt like I was always not quite being able to really make an impact. So then somebody asked me to join the planning board. So I ran for planning board, and I got on. I found that really interesting. And I probably would have stayed there forever, except that we had a select board, we had a planning board member who ran for select board, and he got elected. And as soon as he got elected, his form, well, I don't know who, but somebody was harassing him and doing all kinds of crazy stuff. Going in his yard at night, making videos, and really making threatening messages, creating a fake Facebook profile, claiming I'm so-and-so and I live in Mashpee, but I pretend to live in Falmouth so I can be a select board member. And the poor guy's wife was so freaked out. She asked him to resign, because she felt nervous about her own safety.
What a shame.
So I said, I'm not going to let that get, you know, be a successful strategy for getting on the board. So I ran, even though I didn't have plans to run, just to prevent somebody else from getting on the board. And I found out that actually I enjoyed it. So good. And staying with it.
What do you like most about the select board, your service on the select board?
I like the fact that we kind of set the tone for the town, that respectful tone. You know, I've always appreciated town meeting. When we go to town meeting, we can disagree with the person next to us, but we all, at the end of it, get along and a break. Even though we just finished arguing, we still have a cup of coffee.
Yeah.
That's the way Falmouth is. So.
And what frustrates you?
Nothing lately.
Okay. Good. All right. I'm not going to poke the bear.
We love it.
Bob, my fellow counsel.
Yes.
Hopefully, if if they gang up on us lawyers, we can come right back at them. But what brought you into public service?
Well, certainly, your your story about the Kennedy assassination. I was a few years older than you. I was in seventh grade at a, you know, small Catholic school run by nuns. And the only lay teacher was my seventh-grade teacher. And this kid, who was always an idiot, found it somehow amusing that the assassination had had happened. And the teacher just went after this kid and beat the heck out of him, to be quite honest with you. And that's one of my lasting memories of, you know, and you didn't, and, you know, in those days, the teacher didn't get in all that much.
Was this a nun?
No, it was, it was the only lay teacher in the school. He was my basketball coach.
I've had some tough nuns.
I, I looked up, oh, as have I. So, and so, and Kennedy always inspired me, even to the point when I, I had my interview to go to St. John's Law School, and the dean asked me, you know, so, you know, what lawyer inspired you, you know, on your, on your path? And I said, well, you know, Jack Kennedy. He said, well, you know, don't take this the wrong way, but he was never a lawyer, which, you know, he never was a lawyer. He studied, but he was never a lawyer. But I still got into law school somehow. So anyway, I practiced law. And in 1997, I kind of hit a crossroads in my, my career. And then I ended up being appointed by Governor Pataki as managing attorney for the New York State Office of Mental Retardation and Developmental Disability. And I was there for 12 years. I was appointed as a political favor to someone, quite honestly. And I was fired for the same reason on on the other side. So, but but those 12 years that I spent working for the state of New York were the most rewarding, even to this point in my career, because I felt that I was doing something for the public good.
Sure.
Made me feel good, and I thought I was, you know, helping accomplish something. When we moved to Falmouth full-time in 2016, you know, I thought about getting involved, and I was involved in a couple of committees and whatnot. And an opening presented itself in 2023, and I ran, was elected. I, you know, somewhat of a newcomer and an outsider. So I felt that that was a, you know, a bit of a, of a, you know, something that was important in the town for that viewpoint to be, you know, to be accepted. So glad to be, glad to be on the board. I had run once before in 1993 in New York, and like you, unsuccessfully at that time. So as far as, you know, what inspires me, certainly, you know, having people come up to me and say, you know, the board's doing a good job, or, you know, you guys work very well together. It's, you know, it's certainly good, good to hear that. And for the most part, I think that's been the, been the reaction. I mean, obvious, not everybody's happy. But but for the most part, just, just to know that, you know, we're, we're accepted and respected for what we're doing. And I think everyone in town understands that and appreciates that, and that that inspires me. What frustrates me a little as as an attorney, you know, I'm used to, you know, trying to make things work. And, you know, unfortunately, you know, in today's environment, and with, you know, some of the open-meeting law requirements, and, you know, some of the other, you know, ways some people deal with things, it's a little hard, I think, to 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 try and really get things moving. I'm, I'm thinking some instances, there's, listen, I understand the open-meeting law, and I understand how important it is. But but by the same token, I think sometimes there's a, you know, an overcompensation for for what's really required. And maybe we're going to talk a little bit about that. I, I think sometimes there's a, a concern that, that we shouldn't be collaborating or talking to, you know, developers or, you know, people that want to have some business with the town to try and, you know, move things, you know, along, you know, and get it to a point where the select board, you know, has to make a decision. But
Yeah.
That is frustrating for me.
All right. Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Another member of the Navy fraternity, Scott?
Right. Right. So, five, I think Zelensky's have been here for five generations. I migrated from Pennsylvania down through P-Town and up the Cape, and, I mean, a boat, Logan, and ended up in Falmouth. And I look at you, I went in the Navy in 84. And I remember, when I came back in 99, I saw how much the town had changed. And I saw, I mean, if you drive through town, Town Fair Tire is where my grandmother's house was. CBS is where my great-grandmother's house was. Across the street was the old post office with Gladys Gray, all my family. And I saw how much it changed. And I saw a lot, see, growing up, I never knew we were poor. I never knew that we were a blue-collar, working-class family, because we always had Christmas, we always had birthday, we always had all of that. But our mother was home, so we had somebody guiding us and all of that. And I watched her, she was a Canadian immigrant, didn't get her citizenship till she was 76. And I watched her thirst to try to understand how the town worked and how government worked. And my father was hardcore, union equipment operator. And this is the way it was, and that's the way it's going to be. And I watched her try to understand how things work and help people. So when I went to Navy in 84, I served eight years, and I couldn't stand being away from parents. So when I came home, your life's still in the way. You're trying to make money. You're trying to, you know, build your house. You're trying to do all of this. And I saw all of our property getting sucked up, all the agricultural property, all of, and I didn't know why. We put a development in at our house to give our kid a, a lot for her, for her house. And it ended up costing me $60,000 because of the tilt some people were having with my mother politically and somebody who's long gone from here. And it, quite frankly, it pissed me off. So I got on the zoning board, because I was sick of standing on the sidewalk shaking at something I didn't understand. I guess that's the point of how it happened. And then I got on the zoning board and realized I loved the zoning board. I loved, it was intricate, and it helped me to understand how things worked. And then I started to see how the town worked, and I just wanted to know a little bit more about it. And I was encouraged by people, family, friends of family, all of that. They said, you know, you do a great job on the zoning board. You say what's on your mind. And 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 that's good in politics. Somebody should really say, no matter what hill you die on, if that's how you really feel, or your constituency feels that way, somebody's got to be able to say it unfiltered.
Yeah.
Is that a good technique? I don't know. But I never, I never thought of myself as a long-term politician. I still don't. I, I feel like if I can come in, help with something, I, I'm a big, I'm a big, if you can't do the simple things right, you have no business trying to do intricate things right, until you perfect the simple things. And that's what frustrates me. That's the part. We can't do, if we can't settle our, our simple things, how can we even pretend to know how to intricately solve these big, you know, cosmic problems that we talk about?
Yeah.
And the little things are falling through the cracks. So that's what I try to help with. I try to be the voice on, on this board that sometimes says what everybody else is thinking and may not, may have more proof than me. But that's who I am, and that's, that's what the people that love me and respect me, respect about me. And that's what I think I bring to this board, good, bad, or indifferent. And I love this town. I mean, you know, I'm sitting here with guys, people I went to school with, new people I've met. And, and it does, it takes a whole lot of different kind of people to, to run a town. And I'm finding that out.
Yeah.
Is it frustrating? Absolutely.
Sure. But but obviously, there's some satisfactions in it for you as well.
Well, it, it is. When you have somebody that comes up at a, at a public meeting, and lets you say, waits all week, maybe, to make a two-minute statement for public comment, and then leaves, and doesn't see how the rest of the process takes place, or what goes into it, or asks pertinent questions to understand why they're mad in the first place, that's frustrating.
Yeah.
But just quite recently, we've started to see people that come in and sit for the whole meeting. And you sit there, and you think, what are they doing here? They're learning. They're coming to learn. Because we're so, we're so used to looking out into the crowd. I know why that one's here. I know why that one's here. Oh, I know why that one's here. And then you see people that you don't recognize interacting and taking notes, and they can immediately, they go, oh, my God, why are they here? They just want, like me, they wanted to know more.
Yeah.
And hopefully, people like that, people like me, who's not college-educated, but worked the trades, been in the military, law enforcement, all of that, outreach plans, it will inspire other people that have those ancillary skills that could help a five-member board. Because there are times, I'll look to other board members for their expertise and trust them, and know that they know more about that subject than I do.
Yeah.
And do I trust what they're saying? Do I think, and that's what, sometimes that's what you have to go on.
Yeah.
To be a collaborative board. And it's taken me three years to get to that point, to to not feel like my opinions, you know, that counts.
Some people never get to that point.
Well, I mean, I'm glad.
Unfortunately, yeah.
But, but it's true.
But, yeah, I, I mean, you know, everybody's bringing a different background, different biases, different qualities, experiences, skill sets. And if you're willing to give a respectful listening to their perspective, and have some empathy and understanding of where their viewpoint is coming from, you can learn. You know, if you just shut it out, and and you feel like you're representing an issue, or you're representing a particular mindset, you know, you're probably not going to convince anybody else, because they, they're going to feel like, you don't give a shit what we say, right?
Yeah.
So, you know, why should we listen to you? So, I mean, that's one of the, the beautiful things about select boards. You know, one of my clients was the, in addition to the mayor and all the cabinet heads and the departments, the Boston City Council. And of course, Boston City Council was in the news yesterday, because one of the councilors was arrested for a kickback scheme and and mail fraud. And, you know, the public sees things like that, and they get very jaundiced. And they get very cynical. And the cynicism is not limited to the Boston City Council. And there are some terrific councilors, some of whom I represented when I was corporation counsel for the city. But all it takes is one, one knucklehead. You know, it's like, you know, as a litigator, you know, when I, when I was a, oh, when I was a prosecutor, you know, most people in the jury pool, as you're putting the jury pool together, you know, and you're going back and forth with your peremptory challenges. As a prosecutor, typically, if, you know, you have the judge ask the question, you know, there'll be police officers or federal agents testifying, do you have any biases or predisposed views of that? And probably 80%, maybe 90% of them would say, well, you know, I've got a cop in the family that, you know, I respect greatly. I might give a little bit more attention to that. Or they might say, you know, I'm going to listen to everybody the same. Every now and then, you get that one guy or gal, and, you know, it kind of takes you by surprise, or says, hey, if there's a police officer or a trooper or an agent testifying, you know, I, I, you know, I don't like cops. And, you know, Judge, if you want me to, because you're a sidebar with the judge, I'll tell you why. And of course, you want to hear why. And what I would hear sometimes is, you know, when I was, you know, a young father, you know, my wife and I were taking the kids down the Cape, and we got pulled over for speeding. And, you know, yeah, I was probably five miles over the, the speed limit, and, you know, I was willing to pay the ticket. But the trooper was abusive. The trooper humiliated me in front of my wife and kids. This snarky, sarcastic attitude, every time I tried to say- Every time I tried to say something to him, and I was being very polite, he would talk over me, you know? And, 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 and he was belittling me. And just, I don't think I could listen to your witnesses or the prosecutor's witnesses without thinking about that. And, you know, it's, you know, all of us, we bring those experiences, we bring those skill sets, but we also bring some trauma with us as well. And that trauma can result in, in, in biases. And sometimes it's a matter of being honest enough to work through those biases. Uh, and, uh, you know, I just, you know, that one, you know, and that trooper might have had a bad day. You know, I mean, I think about it, and, and, you know, that trooper might have just come from, you know, a fatal accident, uh, you know, the day before or earlier that morning, uh, or, or something along those lines. But people focus on their own experiences, you know? And, and, and those interactions, good or bad, can stay with them forever. So, you know, one of the things you'll be hearing about from me later on is just, you know, your attitude is on display, you guys are under a microscope, okay? Whether you want to be or not. And sometimes it gets pathological, you know, talking about that, that, uh, new selectman who, who was hounded out of the job because of this, this cycle. But people are looking to see how you conduct yourselves. They're, they're looking to see, are you prepared for the meetings? Are you collaborative with each other? Do you show courtesy and grace with each other? And most importantly, to the public, as they're sitting out there wondering, you know, should I get involved in this discussion, or what, what's my takeaway from this thing? How you treat others out there, even if it's not them, resonates and can stick with them. And, and, you know, I think the good public servants understand that. You don't always get, and I can remember as a young ADA, when you thought, you know, you were master of the universe, six months out of law school, and you suddenly had all this power, and it was easy to, you know, say to, you know, the defense attorney, hey, screw your guy. You know, I, I mean, I'm not gonna give him a break, you know, he beat up his wife, uh, you know, he's, uh, you know, he's, he's, he's a drunk, and this and that. And then after a while, you learn, that's wasted time. It's not professional. It doesn't advance the ball, makes you feel like you're a fleeting moment to, to say that, but it's not making the system better. And the better system is, this lawyer is not the one that beat up the wife. This lawyer is trying to do his job, treat him with courtesy, and for that matter, don't presume that you know what's going through the mind of, of, of every defendant there, because if you get into, you know, an argument, and you shouldn't be doing this anyway, people in the courtroom are gonna look and say, that senator, he's a hothead, you know, watch out for that guy. And they're not gonna work with you, they're not gonna collaborate with you. They're not gonna try to come to a consensus, whether it's on a case or on some courthouse project or something like that. But, you know, great, great comments. Mike?
So, wow, so Bill, thank you for doing this, 'cause I've been working with this group for, well, Heather, not too long, but eighteen months I've been here, and, and I've been in local government for thirty-two years. And this is the first time that, you know, the origin stories kinda gives me the context and a perspective that I, again, in thirty-two years working in local governments, I've not had a facilitator kind of open it up like this. So, as I'm listening, thank you all for sharing, and thank you for doing this.
Oh, sure.
So, uh, so, public service is kind of in my DNA. Um, I grew up in Detroit in the sixties. My dad was a police officer, um, oldest of two, two, two boys. So, I kind of, a little leadership and guidance, that kind of, that's kind of where I picked up, leading my little brother along in his journey growing up. Joined the Navy in eighty-six, I was in for six years. When I got out in ninety-two, I just gravitated towards, again, that line to, to make a difference in my community is kind of, was instilled in me through my father. So, I joined a, a police department out in Arizona, I worked for, as a cop, for about eight years, nine years.
Whereabouts in Arizona?
Glendale, Arizona.
Oh, sure.
Just outside of Phoenix, west side, west valley. So, I loved that job. I left in July of two thousand and one, just a couple, few months prior to, to nine eleven. Decided to get out of law enforcement. I had a mentor in my graduate studies that was a city manager, and he kind of planted that seed and, and told me, you know, you're gonna be faced with a lot of challenges, a lot of challenging, frustrating days, but in terms of making a difference and being able to pull levers and leverage different resources and make a difference in the community, that's the job that he would recommend for me. And so, that's why I decided to get out of law enforcement, although I loved the career, wanted to do something different. So, I got into a, um, a, a job that was so unique, and to this day, I, I, it took me a year to describe to people exactly what I did. It was neighborhood, neighborhood outreach coordinator was my title for the city of Mesa, Arizona, large city.
Yeah.
And basically, um, it was meeting with neighborhood groups, kind of look, learning about their issues and their problems and their struggles and their challenges at the grassroots level or the neighborhood level, and then bringing different city resources to bear, DPW, code enforcement, police department. So, again, learning, um, at that level, how to leverage and utilize different resources in the city to bring focus then, uh, all in one, you know, direction to, to, to make a difference, to solve a problem. So, problem solving has always been kind of a, an emphasis of mine. What, um, what inspires me, I, I, so my pet peeve, I'll start with this, my pet peeve is, you know, we do this because we've always done it this way, and, and, you know, why, why rock the boat?
Old fallbacks.
So, innovation, innovation and change is, is always inspired me, you know, the ability to, you know, come into a situation and, you know, whether it's background or, you know, the ability to listen to the people and their different perspectives to change. Something's, something could be done more efficiently, more effectively, how do we, how do we move the organization in that direction? And, you know, in developing that kind of spirit and mindset in other people around me, you know, I'm blessed to have a lot of great staff around me, and, uh, and it just, sometimes I think in local government, again, having done it for thirty-two years, you get into this, you know, you show up in the mornings and you do your job, and you go home at the end of the day, and you don't really maybe focus on those things that, you know, with a little bit of tweaking and a little bit of change could, you know, could really make a positive difference.
Yeah.
So, being able to instill that spirit in, in other people is an inspiration. The frustrating part, like Bob, sometimes I get frustrated, even after all these decades, process slows you down. You have to, whether it's the open meetings or, um, I'm new to New England, so this whole notion of, of annual town meetings and, and having, you know, that process of having to kind of look forward six months to, and, 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 and kind of develop the foundation, the framework for the stuff that you're gonna need. I'm used to just being able to a little bit more instantaneously, right, react. This is a little bit more of a planning and thoughtful process, which is great.
Yeah.
But sometimes that process is frustrating. It's, uh, you know, like everybody knows, government, local, or state or federal, wheels sometimes turn slowly. So, trying to speed those up or grease those wheels is something that always is, is a challenge for me, looking for ways that we can kind of make things more efficient, more effective, and, and move them along.
I wanted to use the term grease, but I didn't, but thank you. I'm glad you did, anyway.
And Bill, you reminded me what frustrates me, and it's people that don't do their work and don't respect their own position that they have and views it.
Yeah.
Can I just make one quick comment? Just listening to everybody, I, I've worked probably with Doug the longest, I've known Scott the longest, but I heard things about each of you today that I never knew, even Doug, who I've, who I've worked with for the longest time. So, I, I really appreciate that. I think it's very, um, important to hear it, and also, it's kind of, I think it's healthy.
Just being able to share those stories amongst each other in a public forum shows that we trust each other.
And we don't get this opportunity.
I mean, I'm an outsider, but that was fascinating. I mean, you guys are all coming from different backgrounds, I mean, too many sailors in the room, let's, let's put that out.
We run a tight ship.
I mean, there must be something about Falmouth that just attracts, and I can see you leaving Detroit, you know, I mean, 'cause, anywhere, right?
Right, right.
But, um, just very eclectic backgrounds, um, you know, yeah, the kids brought a lot of us into, into different milieus and, and, and surroundings, but, you know, frustration, you know, the cardinal sin of, of government, of voters being, feeling like they're ignored, were not acknowledged, you know, and the, the passion that, that creates, you know, the, the frustration of wanting to work through, you know, the structures and, and, and how to do them. And, you know, some of that is, is built in, some of it, you know, I mean, we've had town government for four hundred years here in the Commonwealth. So, you know, we're a slow-moving battleship, you know, we don't, we don't turn on a, on a dime. But change is made, particularly when you've got people like we have in this room that have passion. I mean, that's, you know, that's the, the overarching theme in this room is, a, a, as you would talk about, things that brought you into public service or things that inspire you, the, the passion that everybody in this room has for it. And you better have that passion, because otherwise you're gonna be miserable, 'cause you're not in it for the money, you're not in it for the glamour, you're not in it for the great press, 'cause you don't get any of those things. You're in it to make a difference. And Heather was talking about, you know, the, the baby steps, the small increments, but that's progress, you know? And, and, and sometimes that, the incremental progress or steps are the setup for something that's, that's, you know, a, a real change agent, you know, a, a, you know, a policy or a protocol, an order that's gonna benefit people's lives, benefit our kids' education, benefit the quality of life in the city, benefit the environment. I mean, what you folks bring collectively to this process is just invaluable. And it's, you know, to those who much is given, much is, is required, you guys understand that, you know? And, and, and you're giving back, uh, uh, that passion, you're giving back expertise, you're giving back your, your, your experiences, and Falmouth is lucky to have that. Scott?
One of the things I forgot to mention is, being in the Navy, I think I've been to, and the security world, I've been to, I believe it's thirty-three different countries now, and seeing the wide, um, the widespread dysfunction, corruption in some places, the underprivileged aspects of forgetting how lucky we are, and, and, and given that context, it, it allows you to help put things in a perspective that some things are really fixable and some things aren't, seeing what you've seen in Djibouti, Africa, or Karachi, Pakistan, or things like that. So, that added, and I forgot to say that, but without the Navy, I wouldn't have been able to get that historical knowledge or life perspective of being able to compare other things to what we have in front of us.
No, it's invaluable, Scott. Somebody asked me the other day at a, at a meeting, you know, what was your favorite Christmas? And I didn't have time to think about it, I said, well, I said, you know, sometimes I'd come back from a deployment, you know, six months, eight months, a year, uh, and I, I'd missed the holidays. But I remember coming back from peacekeeping duty in Bosnia in nineteen ninety-eight, and, you know, just tragic destruction, trauma there, you know, surrounded by people that had, had been victimized. And I was based in Sarajevo, and Sarajevo, they, you know, they still left even three years after the war, and some of the buildings that had been damaged, just as a reminder. You know, you, you could tour where the, the, the snipers in the mountains would shoot at ordinary citizens. You know, that, the Romeo and Juliet Bridge, where the, you know, where the, the Muslim man and, and the, uh, I think it was a Croat, you know, Catholic girl were, were shot to death that they were trying to meet. You know, just so much destruction, so much sadness. And after being away from my four little girls and my wife for ten months, you know, I got back end of November or early December, and it was just one big holiday season, because I appreciated what I had all the more, because I'd seen what so many other people don't have. And that's, you know, that's a perspective, you know, you bring that doesn't ever...
Came back from overseas, we went to Polka, Polka, we said, Boston. And my mother said, what do you want? I said, I want a real glass of milk, 'cause we had powdered milk for the last, whatever, you know, I'm just...
Hated that stuff.
With, you know, things that you appreciate that are just tiny.
Yeah.
But I think if we bring it back to this group, I, I, two things I wanna comment on. One is, I'm a big-picture person, just get it done. Heather is like a step-by-step, knows that you have to do all these steps before you can get it done. So, I feel like some of our strengths balance each other out. And I know Doug, I've talked to Doug a million times, I've known Scott a million times, and Bob, same kind of thing. His perspective has a tendency at times to be larger, so that when I talk to him, it adds something to my view that I hadn't seen before. And just like Heather going, but, you know, you gotta celebrate the little steps, 'cause I, sometimes I forget that, 'cause I just wanna get it done. I don't, I don't wanna, I'm impatient with the steps. So, I think we balance each other out in a lot of ways in this group, and I think that's really important to being an effective board.
Yeah, there's a synergy that comes with those complementary skill sets and tendencies and backgrounds. You know, my wife is a great, big-picture person, she's a professor at Babson, and she, uh, she loves to put together a plan. When it comes to the details, she knows enough to delegate it to somebody else, to, you know, take a look at this particular piece of it or that particular piece of it. But she's like, you know, that's her superpower, is, is, is doing things like that. But she'd be the first to tell you, don't ask me to execute, you know? I, I mean, you know, ask, ask me to come up with a concept, to come up with a plan, and I can do it, but I'm not the one that's gonna say how. You know, of course, as managers know, you know, the board shouldn't be telling them how. You know, you wanna take advantage of their expertise and, and experience, that they know best how these things happen. Sometimes, as we'll talk about, one of the toughest things is, even as you're, got that synergy and those complementary backgrounds and skills and insights, sometimes the toughest thing is staying in your lane when it comes to the execution part. So, we'll talk more about that in a second. But that was, that was fascinating, I, I really enjoyed that, and I appreciate everybody being so candid. Here's the, the, the program, we've already done the welcome, uh, and, you know, we're gonna cover things on, on here, you know, everything's not gonna be equal, you know, I mean, some of these things we're gonna hit in passing. There are some things that I think are more important than, than other, other things, particularly the, the public service mindset, some of the background, uh, you know, the legal underpinnings, you know, Bob and I might, you know, get excited and have to go out and have a cigarette after talking about some of those things. But for the rest of you, you're probably gonna roll your eyes and say, what do we really have to know? Okay? So, we're gonna hit some of those things in, in, in passing. But, you know, we'll talk about, you know, what we're gonna cover, what we won't cover, um, the resource documents that you should always have at the ready, and Nancy has put some of those together for you at this meeting and prior to this meeting, uh, and, and what we're hoping to come away with from this, and we'll get to that in just a moment. Central role of select boards in Massachusetts government, I mean, they've been around since, you know, there was the United States, they've been around since the sixteen twenties, uh, and town government. And town government in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts has been the leader. It wasn't the Commonwealth government, it wasn't the colonial government, it was town government. That, that, that's what people had the most experience with, that's what made the most difference in their lives, and that's carried through, uh, these centuries later.
You know, I, if I could just interrupt, I, I had referenced the Selectment's Handbook many times on particular issues, but never really read the preamble and the history, so it was good to actually sit and read through it.
Yeah, well, I'll be quoting from it heavily during this presentation, 'cause it's a good piece of gear, as we would say in the, the military. That handbook, you know, I've used it before in prior iterations, uh, but it's actually kind of inspiring when you, when you look at it, and it, it's got a good perspective on things, and, uh, you know, well, you know, I'll just tell you one, right now, one of the end products that, that I think we'd like to see from this is Falmouth to have its own handbook. You know, a, a, a lot of it, you know, incorporating things from the, the Mass, the Mass Municipal Association Handbook, but also things that are specific to the town. And we're gonna be asking you guys at the end of this meeting and after this meeting, particularly if you have a chance to look at the Lexington one, which is a little dated. particularly if you have a chance to look at the Lexington one, which is a little dated, I think it's 2010 or something like that, yeah, everybody's still a select man, man or select men.
Yeah, rude.
I'm sure nobody noticed that.
Nancy did.
Of course I did, and I, and you'll see it on top of my, some of my notes, yes.
You know, I remember the uproar over some of the old-guard male government people, "Oh, why do we, why do we want to change that?" And, you know, it's, you know, "Who cares?" And all that, and then it was changed, I think at least 180 had gone to select boards by the end of 2022, and it was like nothing, it was seamless, you know, and everybody said, "Ah, jeez, that was, that was easy." But, but, you know, take a look at that when you can, I think you got a link from Nancy yesterday, if you haven't seen it before. So that'll be one of the deliverables we'll be looking for. Then we'll kind of do a whirlwind background tour of the history, legal underpinnings and general duties, and that's going to be pretty quick. Then we'll talk about the Town of Falmouth Select Board. Now, I don't pretend to be an expert on the Town of Falmouth government, you know, I'm not a resident. You know, my primary contact with Falmouth is, you know, parking on the edge of your lawn as I walk over to the Lawrence School to get on a yellow bus in mid-August, you know, going to Woods Hole and, you know, running from the village to the heights, and spending the whole time cursing those supposedly, you know, gentle hills for the first three or four miles, and then really cursing out loud that final hill before the heights, and the, you know, the sun beating down on you along Surf Drive. And then you hit that final stretch, and you're gliding down to the finish line, and then you go to the greatest reunion in running, and as you can tell, I'm a runner, as I talk about this with some passion, the ball field, where, you know, you lie about how magnificent you were out there on the course, and how you ran just according to your plan, and, but, you know, you're lying to, you know, willing co-conspirators who are doing the same thing, seeing people that the only time you ever see them is on that ball field after the Falmouth Road Race. That's kind of the extent of my contact here, but, you know, there's a lot, you know, and obviously I've read everything I could leading up to this, so I have an appreciation for it. But a lot of what Falmouth does is, you know, resonant of what happens in most other towns. And, you know, a lot of those principles have been honed and refined over hundreds of years. So, you know, we don't have to, when we talk about this handbook, reinvent the wheel, but there are some things specific to Falmouth that we want to include, and we want to tap into your experiences and insights and viewpoints on this as we do this, and try to be careful about it. But we'll talk about the organizational authority, you know, and that packet that you got, you know, your eyes probably glazed over when you opened it up and you saw, you know, the charter, you know, and you've got that, you know, that old, old print, you know, you've got some arcane language that survived in these things for decades and decades. But they're good things to have, is what we'll talk about as a resource tool. We'll talk about the purpose and mission statement from your website. It's always important to remind yourself what your public face is for your purpose and for your mission statement. Then we'll move into the public service mindset. A lot of these items will be covered leading up to that, in fact, we've already covered some of them, staying in your lane and, you know, collective government, you know, government by committee, but we'll talk a little bit more about those in the public service mindset. And then, you know, probably the best item, in my view, from that packet of Falmouth Select Board materials is the Code of Conduct. Because the Code of Conduct deals with, you know, five different dynamics, you know, four of them by every select person, one of them by the chair, you know, duties, but in the course of looking at those duties, there are some caveats and perspectives that we're going to talk about. Once again, you know, you've probably seen this before, but good to be reminded of it. So we'll go through those, and then we've got a, you know, a case study, a scenario, and you're going to look at that, you're going to say, "This fictitious selectman is, or select person is a train wreck." But that's the whole idea, is, you know, we want to throw some things out there and get some discussion, you know, very casual discussion, that hopefully will reinforce some of the things we've talked about, and any other problems and discussions beyond the handbook that come up as well. And then, you know, we'll have some closing remarks. You know, our hope is for this to go two and a half to three hours, or until I feel like, you know, we've either covered everything in passing, or I'm losing you, you know, because it's a Saturday morning, you guys have been working all week, and you're here as a labor of love and civic service for this, this training. But, you know, I'm mindful of that as well. But, you know, my estimate is that we'll be going till approximately 10:30, you know, perhaps to 11:00. I think, is there coffee or something later on, or?
We were going to do lunch, but we didn't, because we're going to, we're hoping to end between 10:30 and 11:00.
So, lunch on your own.
Yes.
Nancy promised me an eight-course Asian buffet.
I did.
Thanks a lot. This wasn't the way I wanted to find out, I'd been had. But, but, you know, this is, as I said at the outset, this is interactive, this is for your benefit, but also for my benefit, you know, and I'm sure for the chair and co-chair for, you know, their meeting responsibilities, and the things that you've said already about your origin stories, I think are already helpful to everybody in the room. But I think that, you know, additional discussion is just going to make that that much better. So let's, let's first talk about scope and products of the, of this workshop. What we'll cover, as I said, what we won't, important resource documents and end products. So what we'll cover is, in a nutshell, how you can maximize the effectiveness of the board itself by understanding and properly executing your role. So, you know, a lot of these things are things we're going to speak about in different fashion, you know, without trying to beat you to death with them. What we won't be covering is the mechanics of municipal government, open meeting law, public records requests, things of that nature. We can cover them in passing, and if you've got a question, by all means, you know, "Hey, Bill, you know, if, if we got an open meeting request, if we got a public records request that's looking for this type of information, do we have to give it? How would you say that?" Feel free to ask that, you know, we don't want to get into anything that's being deliberated currently by the board, but if you've got some general questions of things that have happened in the past, or that you think might happen in the future, then, you know, by all means, come in. But that's not the purpose today. The purpose today is that mindset that we want you to have, that public service mindset, where you talk about the powers and limitations of the select board and of individual members. So, you know, those things might be covered in passing, but that's not our focus. Resource documents, once again, the Mass Municipal Association Select Board Handbook, great piece of gear, the Town of Falmouth Select Board Packet, including the last bullet on there, the Code of Conduct, but some other things that we'll talk about as well, including the organizational charts and things of that nature. And the end products that we're looking for, better-informed and collaborative members, you can already, I can already see you guys work well together, the most effective board that we can have, and this is a dynamic process. You're never going to be most effective if you, if you don't continue to improve, then you're going to regress. You've always got to be looking to, to find better ways of doing things, to achieve consensus and collaboration, and to have that public service mindset, you know, driving you towards whatever the vision is that you set. So you want it to be the most effective at that time, as you can be, knowing that you've got to keep going. You know, the movie Annie Shark, Annie Hall, where Woody Allen turns to Diane Keaton, you know, as they're about to break up, and says, "You know, love is kind of like a shark, a shark's got to keep moving, because if it stops moving, then it drowns." I think what we've got here is a dead shark. And you don't want a dead shark for a board that's stagnated, that's not moving forward, that's not dynamic. You've got to, you've got to keep that process going. And then, as we just said, another deliverable is the Town of Falmouth Select Board Handbook, which incorporates and builds upon today's discussions and feedback. All right, let's talk a little bit about history of the boards, and we're going to go through this in relatively rapid fashion. Pured in origins, you know, going back to the 1620s of town government, and select boards. Select boards, you know, in their origins were persons that were prominent or expertise that at the town meeting would be selected, and they were typically, you know, I think, universally men back then, so the name "selectmen" was referring to these people that were, that were selected. And it would be, you know, anywhere from, you know, three selectmen to a dozen or more. So, you know, the, at the town meeting, when budgets and laws would be approved, they'd periodically select these people to carry out the business of the town meeting after the town meeting. So, these individuals, these select members of the community, selectmen, had authority over administrative areas of town government. And then, as we got into the late 1600s, the Commonwealth became more involved in kind of formalizing some of these, these functions. But before they did, I just kind of props to the city of Boston, even though it wasn't the city of Boston at the time, what was then the Town of Dorchester had one of the first formalized select boards. It was 12 people, 12 men from the community, and this was a designated body, and they operated well, this is before Dorchester's incorporation into the city of Boston. But that kind of set the tone as a GOAT, as an example for other towns in the Commonwealth. So by the mid-portion of the 1600s into the late, the General Court, the legislature, started to define what the responsibility should be of these local boards of selectmen, authority over finances, care of the poor, you know, it was a, we didn't have welfare or food stamps or anything like that back then, and the poor were reliant upon alms and the goodwill of others, and the Commonwealth said, "We've got to, you know, come up with a better way of addressing poverty." Schools, you know, so many of us participated in government as members of school bodies, I was a school site council member and chairman, and, you know, it's kind of great prep for bodies like this, when you see how people who are very passionate about something, their kids and their kids' education, interact, and how the administrations interact, and you learn some good things, and you witness some bad things in that environment.
Hockamok Senate.
What's that?
Went to the Hockamok Senate. My last year of high school, I went to Oliver Ain.
Yeah.
Because I went and lived with an uncle who had a place up there.
Yeah, the Hockamok Senate?
Yeah.
Yeah, is that what it was called?
Introduced a bill called, to break up Bell, Ma Bell.
Yeah.
And all my fellow classmates were like, "That'll never happen." Didn't even make it to the debate.
That Hockamok Senate was very prescient.
Yeah.
What was it, they used to say, "Ma Bell doesn't care because she doesn't have to."
Yeah, Lily Tom.
Yeah, yeah. So, and just as some of these other ones, new residents coming into the town, roads and public works, very big, big deal, because, you know, travel relied upon the roads, they didn't have train systems, and unless you were near a body of water, that wasn't going to help you. So commerce depended upon the roads and public, and public works in general, land regulation, local defense, appointment of other town officials not elected by the town meeting. And then adoption of gender-neutral titles began, you know, in the last few decades, as we talked about earlier, where they're now select boards. So that's just a whirlwind history tour. Legal underpinnings from the general laws, three to five is the standard set by the legislature on an at-large basis, terms of one to three years, and typically, and almost universally done for staggered terms, so that everybody isn't learning the job all at the same time, everybody isn't leaving, you've got some continuity that makes it a more effective body in the long run. Greater responsibilities and authority over time, however, the, there's also been kind of a specialization of officers and boards entrusted with specialized functions, independent of select board control, you know, school committees and housing commissions and things of that nature. So the select boards, the principal elected executive board, and they share executive power with these other boards that have been created, such as school committees, planning board, board of health, some of you've had experiences with those, those bodies, and you know that when done, when run well, they do some very important work. And no single office has comprehensive control of all executive branch town functions. And then the general duties of Massachusetts select boards, set policy and strategic direction, these are just a few of the most prominent, coordinate the activities of other boards, hear appeals, resolve problems not settled at lower levels, and if there's an administrator, the select board members should work through that person to execute. All right, now let's talk about organizational authority and, you know, just very quickly, you know, these are the nine articles in the Charter, the Home Rule Charter. Some of these are more relevant to your duties than others, you know, to the point where I say, keep them handy, because they can be kind of a foundational reference point. When, when an issue comes up that's going to be deliberated or was deliberated, sometimes you want to kind of go back to the town roots and see what they said in the Charter, and what the Commonwealth's influence might be on that, as far as the powers of the government and the powers of town government specifically. Same thing for looking at those origins of town meetings, and it's not all historical, I mean, some of them, I mean, it's supposed to be updated and current, but you can, you can, you know, see what, what has been encapsulated in that, that document as being the, the powers and the responsibilities. But, you know, most importantly, Article Three, the Select Board, I would take a look at that, because that's, it stood the test of time. I'm not going to get into them today, but you've got a copy of those, so I would take a look at that, and I would also look at other elected town boards and officers, and Article Five, the town manager, and how that is conceptualized, and the stay-in-your-lane roles that are conceptualized in that. And the other four items I would look at, they're relevant, but not the most relevant to today's presentation, unless one of you is facing a recall, and I don't think that's the case. But, but they are helpful, even though they are of historical origin. And finally, as you can see in that, that final sentence there, and you've been, you've been given... you've been given copies of at least one of the organizational charts. It's a help, it's a very useful and handy thing to have with you. Even if you've been involved in Falmouth government for a long time, because, you know, it gives you an idea of the, the chain of command, the lines of authority, you know, including dotted line authority for some of these things. There were actually two of these that you would look at, you know, one that's focused on elected and appointed officials, and the other one on the departmental organization. Those are good things to have, because they, they give you a reference point that I think is helpful in, in dealing with the public, but also in, in figuring out where you're going to go on a particular issue. All right, let's, yes.
Question.
Heather.
Um, you know, one of your stated responsibilities of the Select Board is the coordination of activities across various committees and boards of the town. And, and one thing that's always stood out to me about the, this form chart, right, is that there are a number of those elected positions that are, are sitting there as like disconnected standalone boxes, right? Which, from an effectiveness and coordination standpoint, seems like a, a potential liability. And so I, I would love your thoughts on the role of the Select Board staying in the Select Board lane and at the same, you know, or, or whether there's some other place for that responsibility to kind of try to ensure coordination and communication.
Yeah. I think mine's here. Yeah, no. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, the, what I noticed is, in that, that top line, you've got, you know, the asterisk there that shows that they're elected officials. There's not an asterisk that, that they're appointed. You know, obviously, the Select Board's responsibilities here are, are pretty clear. But, you know, I think that the common thread for most of this is, even though it's not a line of authority, Town Manager's Office has to have visibility on, on everything. I think even though there's not lines of authority, I think the Select Board has to have visibility and awareness on, on all of these things. So, yeah, I, I mean, I, I suppose, you know, it looks like some of these things, like the planning board and housing authority and moderator, town clerk are islands. But, you know, you'd have a better idea, Nancy, as far as what the interaction is for those things than, than I would. But I, I don't think that's the end of the story, you know, just because there's not a.
But it does feel like they're different silos.
Yeah.
It feels like they're, they're all separate. And I think what I hear you saying, Heather, is how do we interact with them in a way? I mean, like, the school committee almost feels like it's hands off, because they are their own board, they run the schools, but the, it's still town money. And that question has come up a couple of times about how, how much can we ask?
Does their budget go through you?
Their, go ahead.
Yeah, so, you know, I think our process is very similar to most other towns. It's not a regional school, it is, you know, it is a Falmouth school. So both budgets go through the finance committee and town meeting formally. That's, that's where it lies. And that's what sort of, it's confusing and challenging, you know, to, to see that the Select Board is supposed to have a role coordinating all these elected boards. Not, I mean, there's no authority to do that, right? Like, the Select Board, and this, and this comes up from time to time, the Select Board cannot dictate to the school committee or the, or the planning board what they should be doing. We can coordinate, we can arrange joint meetings and promote dialogue, but it's not, it's not an authority, right? It's an opportunity to communicate and collaborate. And a lot of that does happen through the Town Manager's Office. So, coming back to the budget, we do meet with the school superintendent, you know, so it's not at Select Board, school committee level per se. But the school superintendent meets with us, and we have a very good, you know, rapport and culture where there's good communication there. So when the Town Manager puts his budget forward, it does include the top line school department number based on that communication.
Yeah.
But I, I just wanted to sort of put up a, sort of a caution flag. There's, you know, there's some implication of coordination among those elected bodies that somehow the, the Select Board is the chief policy-setting board. But the ability to really, to shape that and do that is, is actually pretty limited. It's, it's informal power, I guess is what it is.
The day-to-day stuff to stay in your lane.
Right.
It always has been traditionally, I mean, that's what it feels like, like.
I'm going to go to, yeah, exactly. I'm going to go to Doug and Bob.
I think it's, it's, it shows that it's up to us to invite them to talk and to work collaboratively towards those goals. We have to pay attention to their local comprehensive plan, they need to look at our strategic plan, we all need to pay attention to what each body is doing and work collaboratively. And then it's up to the voters to pay attention if we're not doing that.
Oh, yeah.
You know, if anybody on the school committee is truculent, combative, they probably won't get reelected, you know, if they're not willing to work collaboratively towards our shared goals.
I, I think one of the confusing pieces to residents, because this has come up to me a couple of times, is about the money. You know, like, like, let's just take the schools. Well, that's our money. And you, the Select Board, you're representing us. They, they don't understand that there is a separation, and it can get very sticky and very weird. Because they look to us to hold, that we hold responsibility and that we need to be accountable for what is happening. And that isn't really quite how it works.
How do you say?
The school.
The school, I'm just saying this, I'm picking the school department because I know it well. But, but when it comes down to the money and how it's being spent, we don't have a say, but that doesn't resonate with people. And so trying to explain that a little bit is, is tricky.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, as you know, I mean, I've, I've asked about, you know, more oversight or at least some idea of what goes on with the school committee, because as we saw with, you know, one of the cities here in the, you know, Boston area, you know, the school committee dropped the ball, and the town or the city, and they had to step up. And we don't want to be in that, in that position. I understand and trust Mike and Peter, you know, working with the school, uh, school committee and coming up with the budget. But I do sometimes get concerned about, you know, making sure that, you know, that, that things are running the right way and that we know if a problem's coming down the, down the road. The other thing I'll say is, and I think Heather may have brought it to my attention, but I think the code requires us, we're supposed to meet with the planning board.
Yes.
Twice a year.
Yes.
And we, I mean, as far as, as long as I've been on, other than when we just appointed a, a new member, we have not done that. And I certainly think, vis-à-vis the, you know, the changes to the Mr. Cod and the short-term rental and ADUs, I think we really need to, to try and get that going so that we are actually meeting with the planning board. We don't dictate to them.
No.
We don't control them. But I think it's good for us to, to collaborate.
And in that same vein, you could say the same thing with the zoning board. And so we've already sort of, are working on setting that up to meet, to bring the zoning board, so, not that we have any, you know, but we need to know how that works and what's, so we do have that on our list to bring it in. It's difficult to do it during our regular business meeting. So I have to actually extend to make that happen, like I want to do with the zoning board, we talked about that maybe a couple of weeks ago, to start getting that done. I'd like to do the same thing with the planning board.
Maybe just meet a little earlier on.
That's what I'm saying. I'm not saying create a new day. We, I, I know we can't do that, but to back it up, as long as I don't have an executive session, we'd have to start much earlier.
Now, does that happen by way of liaison request or interaction with liaison? Is that how it gets presented?
It absolutely could, yeah, it absolutely could. And because it's in the Charter, we, it should be somewhat triggered each year.
Sounds like a great item for the Town of Falmouth Select Board Handbook that's under construction. Just to be able, both as a process of going through and defining what responsibilities are, what the relationship is, but also so that everybody sees how the, the board views it. And, you know, it might prompt the board to, to, you know, letter of understanding or memorandum of understanding with the zoning board or, or, you know, school committee, just defining that relationship. Because it's all well and good to say the power of the purse, you know, is, is going to, you know, give some, some control, even if you wanted the control. You know, it's, Boston City Council had and has authority over the, the school committee's budget, you know, the multi-billion dollar budget. They don't have the authority to go in there and, you know, say who the superintendent's going to be, to say what the curriculum should be, to say, you know, what schools should be closed and, and not closed. That's the school committee and the mayor's office's function. And, you know, granted, you know, having a, a strong mayor form of government is, is a different dynamic. But, but I, I think this handbook is a good opportunity to kind of, you know, as I hear these questions, there's some ambiguity here, and everything works great until it doesn't. You know, until somebody on these zoning boards says, you're not the boss of us, you know, no, we're not going to talk to you about that, you know? Or, you know, we'll come to the meeting, but don't try to tell us what to do or whatever. You know, i- i- it's helpful if, particularly if you've gotten buy-in or at least visibility from these other organizations that Heather pointed out on that, that org chart. So they're, is, is singing from the same sheet of music. And, and if there are things that can't be agreed upon, then you figure out a way to, to characterize them.
And I think it's in the approach of the invitation as well.
Yeah.
What is the purpose? And it's important.
I have a question for you. I find it challenging, we have a lot of committee assignments, and each committee has a different way of doing things. It's hard to know what level of interaction we can have with those committees and what I, sometimes I find myself mired in, what can I say? What can I request? What, what level of participation am I responsible for? Because some of these committees expect you to be somewhat part of that, that committee, which I, I feel like we're not. But if we, I don't know what that level of participation is. I mean.
One, one of the things that I.
I hope anybody else has that.
That I included in, in your resources and, and that I've asked Bill to sort of speak to, is our liaison policy.
All right.
And what, what your responsibility is and what you are not supposed to do.
So, so recently, as it layers on to the CPC, one of the, one of the members, you know, contacted me and, you know, prefaced it by saying, as, as our representative to the Select Board, you should da-da-da. And I wrote back to him and said, you know, you need to, and this was a smart guy, I mean, not, you know, not, you know, I, I said, you know, you have to understand, I'm not the representative, you know, from the CPC to the Select Board. I'm there as a liaison, I'm here to listen, I'm here to, you know, be a coordination point of contact, but as far as actually being, you know, advocating for your position or what's going on there, that's not my responsibility.
Yeah, and I think that's the right answer. You, you know, you're first and foremost a conduit for information. You know, you're taking things back to the board, giving situational awareness of what's going on with a particular department or other body to the, your fellow Selectmen. I mean, you know, we've all been in that position where, you know, you're, you're in a department or a committee, whatever, and you're looking for every bit of help you can get, you know? And if they think you've got the juice and they can get you on board, then they want you lobbying for them, and that's perfectly understandable, but that's not, that's not your role.
And you don't work for that committee.
Yeah.
The committee to which you liaise, you do not work for them, and you do not, in any way, shape or form, and I think it, it can be tricky, you do not participate in any deliberations. And that's hard when you're sitting there. Like, at a school committee meeting, I might want to say, you, that's not my role.
Or correct something.
Yeah, um, let me, Bob, I'll go to you, and then Peter had his hand up, so I just want to make sure he can recognize.
That being said, early on in one of my, one of my appointments, I was contacted one of the groups that I'm on, I liaise on, and I said, you know, could we meet? Because I'd like to know, you know, what's, what's been going on. And kind of the, the answer back was, somehow I was, I was overstepping my, my bounds and even asking for that, you know, that kind of background meeting, so.
By that committee member?
By, by someone on that committee, yeah. So, I mean, it's, so we're done with, but.
That's why I don't.
That's why I don't think there's a clear understanding, even on the part of the committees.
Committees.
That's my point.
I, I agree.
You know, as to what's the responsibility.
And I think we do have this policy, but I think also adding this to our handbook.
Yeah.
So that committees understand what we understand. But, go ahead, Peter, let me just go to you, and then Doug, and then Heather.
Yeah, I just wanted to go back to the, you know, this question about how the Select Board relates to all of the other elected bodies. And, you know, one of our roles in the Town Manager's Office is, you know, we know how much work there is to do and how much the Select Board is asked to do, and, and our office as well. So we always have to look through sort of a lens of triage, right? And what's important and what can we do? And in that vein, I guess I want to push back a little bit on spending a lot of time communicating with these boards about how's our relationship supposed to work and what is our expectation of what you're going to do and what we're going to do, because there isn't authority behind it. And it could take a lot, I mean, that's a very gray area, it could take a lot of time to get to any consensus, which could dissolve as the members of those two bodies change. So I would rather see us, let's, let's identify some significant issues and just address those issues, right?
I completely agree. I think there are some things with, with the zoning board and some changes that we need to bring forward. The Charter says planning board, but I, I in no way hope, I did not say that all these other, there's just no way that we can do it. And I think part of your issue, or the Town Management's issue, is you have to prioritize, because otherwise, you know, you do tend to, to drown. You, you have to prioritize. On the other hand, the Select Board needs to be able to address the questions that come up.
And that's a big one.
Doug and then Heather.
So when, when we attend these committee meetings, many times, they're not sure how government will work in a particular situation. So it's up to us to offer, and if we don't know, we find out. And then, I think we do, we won't advocate for their position, but we need to make the Select Board aware of what these committees are working on. If there's something important that's coming our way, we're the conduit, we're the informer.
Yes. And that's our main role.
Right.
Yeah, I guess, kind of piggybacking on that and responding, Scott, to something you'd said earlier about not correcting information in, in the course of deliberations. And I guess I would, would see a liaison role as being a two-way flow of information that is, if there is information, you know, correcting information, if there is information that we as liaison have because of our participation on the Select Board, to offer that information, not an opinion, not as deliberation, but if there is information that can be offered about, you know, a recent Select Board conversation or something like that.
And also.
That can contribute to those deliberations.
And also process, because what I find out from, from those particular meetings is that sometimes they are unclear about the process. And I'm, I'm hesitant to give any sort of opinion unless it was otherwise stated publicly at a Select Board meeting. What I find mostly comes up is process.
Yeah.
Like, what is, you know, you're telling us this, but how does that, how does it go from A to D?
Right.
What, you know, and I have no issue speaking of process. I'm more careful about any sort of opinion, any sort of thought, that is just, I don't go there unless it's a Select Board agreement or statement that's been publicly made. Then I'll repeat it, because it's the whole board. It's not my opinion, it's the five-member board's opinion, and it came out publicly. Otherwise, I'm, I'm very careful. Scott, what do you want?
I just think that as we draft and/or amend our handbook, the committee handbook should be brought up to speed so they have the same information on responsibilities that we do, so the interpreter, so we have something to refer to when we're there.
That's a good point.
If you look at your committee handbook, you'll see right here where blah, 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 so they're not. blah, 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 so they're not, because it is difficult.
It is, sorry.
Different boards are different.
It is.
Some people don't need you for anything, and, and, you know what I mean, and, see you next time. The other ones are looking to you at every subject for your input and you're like, so.
Just a quick point on this, so it's something I've noticed and I've talked to Nancy before. So in our strategic plan, select board's got a really, I think, robust five-year strategic plan under organizational effectiveness, there is a specific actionable goal that talks about, and I took, I always have taken this as the town manager's office shall host a meeting with committee chairs to discuss annual schedule and how the board, with a capital B, can support the committees in their work. I mean, that's, that's in the current strategic plan. In the 18 months I've been here, I've not done that. And, and I don't know, maybe as we take this and kind of refine and focus through this policy guide, maybe that will be something that, that the town manager's office takes on, an annual meeting, you know, semi-annual meeting with the committee chairs to discuss how the board can support the committees in their work. I'm just throwing that out because right now, again, it's, it's not being, and I don't know, Peter, you've been here for, for six, seven years, I, we haven't done that.
No.
The plan is relatively, this plan is relatively new.
Right.
It's a few years old.
Yeah.
There was an emphasis when this was adopted, so again, it may help to kind of coordinate, you know.
Yeah, and I think it may have pre, you may have been the only one on the board. It sounds like a, something that would have been brought forward, you know, four or five years ago.
Or more.
Yeah, five, yeah, maybe five to seven years ago. And there was, there was, at that time, definitely an emphasis on better communication with the various town boards and committees.
I don't want to blame everything on COVID, but it did throw a curveball our way. You know, we used to have those annual potluck dinners and we had a lot more coordination, a lot more social interaction with committees and boards. COVID kind of threw us a curveball and I don't think we've ever really come back fully from that.
Yeah, and I, and I think that, you know, social gathering of the committees, I think there was some real benefit to that. This meeting that's in the strategic plan strikes me as a little bit unreally. I don't know, you know, how are we going to have a meaningful conversation with 20 boards, 40 boards at the same time?
Fifty people.
And all the pitchforks and torches.
Yeah.
Remember, we had the one at Falmouth Academy where we had a conglomeration of boards. And, and was I the only one that was there? It was a big meeting.
Yeah.
It was a multi-board, we had ZBA, planning, Senate Board, Housing Trust, or whatnot.
You're talking about expectations.
Well, so, yeah, we may want to revisit that. And again, what I'm hearing is that, you know, the importance then and now of having that dialogue and the channel of communication, and right now, I think that's maybe a missing piece. I don't know the best way to honestly to do that.
Yeah, I mean, I, I do agree, and I think we've surfaced here, that different committees are operating differently and, and my experience in, and I have reached out and talked with the chairs of most of the committees I'm a liaison to and haven't experienced that kind of, you know, pushback to, to that idea. But they definitely seem to be operating differently, seem to have different understandings of what the liaison role is and what that relationship is. And so I, I don't know if it's, you know, necessarily a meeting to, to discuss the relationship, but maybe there's a more regular, essentially training, you know, something, le- level setting so that the committees are, are functioning more similarly and do have.
It'll, it'll never be perfect because you have-
No.
People are different, you know? Some people that are chair committees are type A and they want to get things done and they'll try to get you to do stuff, and others are just like, can you help us?
But maybe one of the roles of liaison could be, here's the liaison policy to the chair. Not how it's worked in the past, but this is my understanding of this liaison policy. I think that could really help.
Because we're talking about staying in lanes.
Yeah.
There you go.
And that's a big lane.
Yes.
There's no guardrail.
Yeah.
You could create that guardrail for that lane by doing just this.
I think that's a good idea.
Now, see, Heather, with that very innocent question, rolled a hand grenade into the middle of the room.
A good-
But, you know, this is-
In a very nice way.
This is obviously-
Everybody jumped on it.
This is a very substantive issue that, that should be addressed and it's going to make your job easier and these, you know, other stakeholders' jobs easier if you can put some definition to it. And, you know, in some cases you can't, in some cases you don't want to over certain things, but you want to be in control of what you do, even if it's, you know, we've decided not to do nothing or not to make a statement on this, or, you know, we think we can throw something out there that talks to motives and, and need to cooperate and things like that, or we want a line of authority, you know, or we want something direct and specific, and this is our, our reference for it. But at least, you know, you understand this, you got the opportunity to do that through the handbook and through the process that might accompany that handbook of, of, of talking to these folks and, and finding out what's the best way to move forward.
It's also our responsibility to model what this liaison policy says for our subcommittees. That's our job, right? As, as select board members and as liaisons to, to subcommittees, it's our job to model this policy. And, and I think that also with giving them the written policy to the chair is really important. Go ahead, Peter.
I apologize for dragging this out a little further, but I didn't want to miss this opportunity. I was reading the charter recently and came upon the appointment section, and there's a provision in the charter that talks about consulting with the chair of the committee when there's an appointment to be made, which we have not been good in the town manager's office in, about facilitating it. It hasn't happened, to my knowledge, regularly in the eight years I've been here. And I think it could be really valuable, so I just wanted to sort of bring that to our attention and see if it's something that we might want to, to make a point of doing.
Yeah, great.
All right, let's do one more slide and then take a break. And, and this is, this is from your website. And, you know, I've, I've added a lovely photo of the old town hall on there, you know, I'm assuming it's a photo, one of those old-style photos, but, you know, we've got some real history here.
Mm, cute, it's better than this one.
Is that the school I've been building?
You know, it looks like it.
That's what it is, that is what it is.
Yeah. It's a gorgeous building.
That's what it's going to look like when we, never mind.
When you go back there.
My father was born in the house right next to that building.
No kidding.
Really?
They moved it across the street.
Yeah. All right, so, you know, the importance of, of my putting the purpose and the mission statement here is both as a reminder, but also because mission statements and purposes that accompany them are a symbol of a body's values and priorities. And it's important that you look at these, and I'm not going to go through them, but, you know, I would encourage you to take a look at these, at these priorities, these values that the select board has said will be our, you know, guiding principles, and see if they're still relevant. See, are there other ones? You know, but, you know, this is what you look at when you, when you talk about, you know, managing or leading change, one of the things you look at is how does the mission statement guide the mindset that, that follows? Strategic planning, you know, you know, should make reference to the, and I think the strategic, the five-year strategic plan that Falmouth has is terrific. I mean, I, I, I think there's some great substance there, great goals and milestones there, and we'll briefly talk about the vision thing and the, the planning thing. But this is supposed to be kind of the, the, the underlying basis, the, the priorities, the principles that are guiding the strategic plan and guiding your operations as a select board.
We just went through a six-month process, Bill, to end up, when the select board adopted a, a mission, vision, and core value statement, I don't even know where you found this.
Yeah, this is not our mission statement necessarily.
Yeah, so, so I'm on the website right now and I'm sure it's there, but that's my, so again, so Peter and I-
I was just looking for it.
Process with the staff and, and it does not align with that, so we, so-
Okay.
Not to myself, we got to go back and-
I've got-
What about that?
I just looked myself.
So our website-
I pasted from the website probably two or three weeks ago.
I'm not doubting it's there on a page, I'm just searching for it. It's, you're talking and I'm looking, where did this come from?
Good, good. Well, we can, we can update, just, just, you've already updated.
That's Falmouth main.
Yeah, yeah.
No, it's just Falmouth.
I'm only kidding.
No, I see it. It's right, it's right at the bottom of the select board page.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, I haven't come to the website yet.
So it's the, yes, it's a-
So thanks for bringing that to our attention.
I missed that one.
We spent months working on a brand-new mission, mission, vision, value statement.
Right, but, so this is a mission statement for the select board specifically as opposed to a, a mission-
For the organization as a whole.
For the town and the organization as a whole, and I don't-
That's a good point.
Know if they should be the same or different.
Yeah, that's a good point, yeah.
It is.
I was going to say, there's nothing really wrong with it.
Because these are, yeah, these are our responsibilities.
Right. It's not the town's mission statement.
Oh, good point.
Yeah.
Yeah. We can take a five-minute break, but we have a lot of work to do.
Yeah, we do. When we come back, we'll, we'll, we'll talk about public service mindset.
Okay.
But, yeah, let's take, what do you want, five or 10?
Only five.
Five minutes, okay.
Because if we want to get out by 11.
All right, the chair is cracking the whip.
All right.
About a minute over five.
Okay, we're going to, we took a short recess and we're going to come back to order and continue with our presentation.
All right, thanks. We'll try to pick up a little bit of speed here. A lot of the things that we've already covered are going to inform us on, on these things, so that's, that's very doable. But let's, let's start talking about that mindset. And, and the things we're going to talk about are staying in your lane, collective action, strategic responsibilities, leadership, and community engagement, and one more, media relations, although we're going to not get into the weeds on, on that. And a lot of that falls on, on your chair. But, but let's talk about the first one. I contacted a friend of mine who's a former president of the Massachusetts Municipal Lawyers Association, MMLA, and I said, Henry, what do you think the most important thing for a select board member to know? And he got back to me and he said, stay in your lane. He said, that's the most important thing, whether it's a city councillor or a select board member. He said, the problems come about when somebody either doesn't know what their lane is or doesn't care what their lane is, and chaos can ensue. You know, quick anecdote, in 2005, I had just come back from Iraq, I was asked to speak at a Veterans Day ceremony in Milton, and they asked me to wear my blues because even a homely guy like me looks good in Marine Corps dressed blues. So I wore my blues and I spoke to a couple hundred people and I was on the front page of the Milton Times. While I had been in Iraq, my private practice had imploded, so I was looking for jobs. I had, you know, I was talking to a, a big firm, I was talking to some mid-sized firms, some general counsel offices. But I get a phone call a couple days after the, the Veterans Day ceremony from a member of Governor Romney's office, and he said, sir, you know, kept calling me sir and Colonel, so, you know, I knew he had to be a veteran. Sir, the governor and I were looking at the Milton Times and, and I told him that I knew you and I thought you'd be a good person to put on the board of Mass Maritime Academy. And I said, well, that's very kind of you. I, I said, do we know each other? He said, well, sir, you don't remember, but you re-enlisted me 20 years ago when I was a, a corporal and I was stuck in Boston on, on family leave and I, I couldn't find anybody and people said, go talk to Bill Sennett at the U.S. Attorney's Office, he'll sway you in. So I brought this gentleman, Jack Klein, was his name with a C, into the U.S. Attorney's Office, and instead of just me, I had about 25 of my colleagues in the press room with the flags behind us, and he got a nice round of applause as I administered the oath to him, and he didn't forget about it. And he saw this photo of me and, and Romney, Governor Romney had said, yeah, absolutely, let's see if we can get him on board. And he said, I don't know if you're aware of what's going on, but there's chaos down there right now. The board and the administration, the admiral down there, the president, have had a falling out for some time now, and they, the board fired the admiral, but turns out they had deliberated in violation of the open meeting laws, so they had to reinstate him. And, and that, that has just made things worse. And the governor and I are hoping you can get on there and kind of smooth things over and get them back focused, and, and we've got a, an Air Force general that we've asked that will be starting the same day as you, Jimmy Dishner was the name, just a lovely human being. So I, you know, he said, you want to think about it? I said, I don't have to think about it. I went to, you know, school with Mass Maritime graduates, you know, that are still friends, it's a great institution, sign me up. So within a couple of weeks, I was down there for the next meeting and I immediately saw what the problem was. The admiral was sitting there and, you know, getting icy stares from the board members, or some of the board members. And, you know, a couple board members started talking about really in-the-weeds things that they were unhappy with the administration doing. You know, disciplinary issues involving one or two students, you know? You know, why was that done? That shouldn't have been handled like that. And of course, I did the Columbo routine. I stood up and I said, hey, guys, forgive me, I, I mean, I'm, I'm the new guy and I, you know, I may not know shit, so, you know, you can ignore me if, if you want, but why the hell is the board getting involved in a disciplinary issue? Everybody kind of leaned forward. I said, isn't that something that you got to leave up to the administration because they're in the best position to get the facts and talk to people and, and have the experience to, to know how to, how to execute on those things? They kind of looked around and I could see the admiral sitting there in the, in the first row going like this, you know, with, trying to suppress a smile on his face. But they had gotten so, you know, it started with a personality conflict, and I, I ended up being great friends over the next five years with these, these board members and with the admiral. But, you know, the personality differences, you know, and he was a little tone-deaf, you know, as we told him at different times about things that would push their buttons. You know, he had a, you know, the Navy mindset of, of, you know, highway of the highway, you know, I'm the commander of this ship, and when you're responding, when you're answering to a board, you're not. But by the same token, they had gotten over-involved in things that they shouldn't have been. You know, we should have been setting the policy, we should have been dealing with the budget, we should have been carrying out this, you know, the strategic plan that was being, you know, formulated. And Dishner and I said, General Dishner and I said, yeah, look, guys, why don't you take a long-term view of this and, and judge the admiral and his administration on their body of work? Let's make part of the strategic plan to be their performance. So you took the passion out of it, it was a dispassionate relationship from then on, by and large, where there were quantifiable items in that strategic plan that, you know, by 2022, the academy will increase its DEI representation by 5%, you know, something like that. So that if it didn't happen or there was a regression on, on, on those numbers, that the administration would be judged on those things. So rather than having this, this back-and-forth interaction, you had, you know, this definition of roles that I, I think worked to the benefit of the, of the academy. And we brought in this expert on, on, on setting up these types of systems, and he was, he was terrific, I forget his name, but I would, I would hire him again for a similar type situation in, in a minute. But they weren't staying in their lane. And, and they, as a result, were, you know, like a dog chasing his tail around, they were getting distracted and tied up in things that really weren't, weren't the types of things that they needed to be doing. So staying in your lane, you know, I can tell you a, a couple of things that Henry, my, my pal, the former president of MMLA said, he said if, staying in the, in your own lane includes that if authority is exceeded, any action taken would be null and void. So you can't exceed your lawful authority or it's null and void. The board is empowered, not individuals. If you're acting on your own, if you're freelancing, you're in the shoes of a private citizen. You don't enjoy the protections of, of a board and you don't, you don't assume the, the powers of the board.
May I ask you a question on that?
Sure, Scott.
How would you, what's your advice on-
How would you, what's your advice on handling constituency concerns? Is it better to refer them to town management, or in the past, I've been caught up, I'm sure others have, in taking a concern to the town manager or the town office and then following up with the constituent? How, what?
Yeah, it's a great question, Scott. I think the reality is that you've got to be accessible. You know, I mean, to pretend that you can just dish things off when people, you know, you're a member of the community, you're gonna interact with people at the coffee shop, on the street, as well as at meetings and government functions, and sometimes people want to be heard, you know, and, you know, can drive you crazy at times, you know, you're trying to get to, you know, your granddaughter's recital, and somebody wants to talk to you about a crosswalk. And, you know, but that's, as I see it, that's part of your job, is to listen. Now, I think you're gonna make plain, you know, look, this is something that the board and the administrator would have to have power, I don't have any say in it, but I will communicate your concerns to the board as a potential agenda indictment, but also to the administrator. But I don't have the power to do this. You know, make sure they understand what your role is. But I, you know, I think one of the great things about town government is that accessibility. People want to be heard. People want to feel like they're being acknowledged and taken seriously, and I think each of you in this room is part of that dynamic.
Falmouth's very territorial, so there are East Falmouth guys, there are Woodsole people, there are uptown people, that they think they're the only, you're the only one that they can go to.
Yeah.
Because you're from that, you know what I mean? And trying to get them convinced that maybe a different perspective or this, that. But I've found that I've run into, they think you're the only one that can handle this, and I've adopted a practice of now calling the office, probably driving your butt crazy, but this one is going to be calling you about this, because that's where we've directed it. So we don't waste, I don't waste my time in that vicious circle of who told who what went.
Yeah.
So that's how I was doing it.
I think the important thing, Scott, is that you pass it on to everybody.
Yep.
You know, so that the board as a whole has visibility on it, and the town manager has visibility on, and anything like that. And you've done your job, you know, and then the board can decide, you know, whether this becomes an agenda item, you know, and, you know, I'm sure, you know, Nancy can give a lot of feedback on that, but at least the person's been acknowledged, you know, and that's worth something, and you get back to the person, say, you know, I passed it along, we'll see what happens, you know, and they'll say, hey, thanks so much, you know, I've been heard.
Thank you.
I think ninety, for me, ninety percent of it is people just misunderstand. Why the heck is the town doing this?
Yes.
Oftentimes, I can just say, it's actually not like that, it's like this, and they're like, oh, wow, thanks.
Yeah, yeah. All right, so, yeah, Henry had some, well, one more bullet here. Coordinate the activities of other boards as part of staying in your lane as a body. But Henry said, if the board itself or a member interfered in an area beyond the scope of the board's authority, there would likely be friction, hell, there would sure as shit be open warfare between the select board and the other public body, the board who's turf the select board is infringing on, getting back to Heather's hand grenade in the room, and why having an understanding is so important. And then he said, and that goes double for any member of the board who is going rogue, and I don't imagine you've seen that here, but I've seen it, you know, with the, you know, the cautionary tale of all deliberate bodies, the Boston City Council, where, you know, members go so rogue sometimes, they're indicted. But also where, you know, they've lost the bubble on their collective responsibility. You know, they're out for their own interests, you know, redistricting discussions, you know, where you had district counselors trying to pack their districts with a particular racial demographic, because, you know, it's gonna guarantee that they can be a counselor forever, whereas that's going to have an effect where it's going to take some of those numbers out of another district, you know, it's like that balloon that gets squeezed. But they want what's good for them, and, you know, the board and any responsible deliberative body has to, even as it acknowledges those concerns, it's gotta do what's good for everybody. Let me just see, oh, yeah, and he reminded me of one issue where one of the counselors decided that she was going to individually hold meetings with the public on Boston Public Schools property, you know, to hear their concerns, and we had to tell her that she had no authority to do this, you know, that's a city resource, you know, if you do it, you've got to do it with the authorization of the city council. You've got to take it to the city council, you know, sometimes through a board, I mean, they've got, like, through a committee, they must have, you know, twenty-five different committees, you know, everybody's got their own fiefdom there, but you can't freelance on these things. So I thought Henry had some good advice there.
Can I go?
Yes, please.
Can you just go back, staying in your lane? I think the last two bullets are really important, work through the town administrator, or the...
Yeah.
And then the last one is, we have to acknowledge what is day-to-day management and what is policy. So, and I think we've all gotten trapped in that at some point. That's a real hard one, and I think for the management to be able to manage the town in an effective, responsible way, the board needs to stay out of what you do day-to-day.
Yeah. You're not administrators.
Right.
You're policymakers, and it's a difficult thing. I mean, every board runs into these issues. And the next slide that we'll talk about with, you know, Harry Truman's lovely visage greeting us, is just a follow-up to that, collective action. All right, so there's Truman, who took office when FDR passed away in office, but he said, the leaders who work most effectively, it seems to me, never say "I." And that's not because they have trained themselves not to say "I," they don't think "I," they think "we," they think "team." Most importantly, they understand their job is to make the team function. They accept responsibility and don't sidestep it, but "we" gets the credit. So in speaking about collective action, you're talking about government by committee. So legal authority requires a properly called and posted meeting with the majority, with the quorum. A majority must vote far or against, it's, you know, once again, it's not one individual, and it doesn't require unanimity, although unanimity is always nice in conveying the perspective of the board. Individual members must work with other board and committee members, and a big part of that is courtesy and compromise. It's what you guys were modeling in that first discussion today about origin stories, you know, the courtesy to understand someone else's perspective, and the willingness, you know, even on issues that you feel passionate about, to acknowledge the validity of what you're hearing from their positions, and to compromise. You know, in government and in politics, compromise is not a dirty word, and, you know, we've got a representative democracy and a select board is representative. I mean, you know, you've got town meeting, but, you know, the real work gets done and the decision-making gets done at this level. 2012, we had Occupy Boston take over Dewey Square on the Greenway, and, you know, they had these encampments all over the country, on Wall Street, Oakland, where somebody got killed, when the police interceded. I mean, it was, it looked like it was gonna be this, you know, incredible phenomenon, and for about a month or six weeks, it was. And, you know, because my boss, Tom Menino, was a twenty-year incumbent, he really wasn't all that concerned about losing his office, so he could be a little bit more patient than others, but that's the approach we took. We went to court, and we brought in a, instead of treating this as a law enforcement issue, which most other towns did, we treated it as a public safety issue. We brought in the fire marshal, we had blown-up photographs of bales of hay inside tents, and the bales were there to insulate, but we also, you know, had candles on top of the bales of hay. We had guidelines running from these tents across the pathways there, and we were right next to the expressway, a ramp for the tunnel leading to the expressway. So the fire marshal talked about the danger of a fire, a conflagration there that could kill dozens, talked about the stampede that would result as, that would result from that type of an action, and issues of people jumping into traffic, things like that. By the time he finished, the judge was so shaken, she said, you guys have made a convincing case, take it down whenever you think it's appropriate. So we, you know, we waited a couple of days and then went in at midnight, and at that point, there were just forty diehards who insisted on being arrested, and the BPD obliged them. But part of the problem with Occupy was, you couldn't make a decision. We would go to them and say, you know, we'd like to propose that we have regular meetings each evening at, you know, six o'clock, and we talk about the next day's activities. Well, they didn't have representative marching, they had to have everybody be part of this decision, so you'd have sometimes five hundred people called upon to make a decision, and as you can imagine, five hundred people are incapable of making a decision in a setting like that. You know, Menino said to me, he said, you know, Billy, he says, if they had been smarter, they would have been a real force for change, but he said, because they had, you know, this structure, they got hijacked by every far-left issue that came up, you know, one day they're marching to the, to the federal courthouse in support of somebody who'd been charged with terrorism, you know, American citizen who'd been doing propaganda films for ISIS. You know, the next day, they, you know, some Marxist group, you know, had them march on the Federal Reserve, you know, and they just kind of lost everybody because, you know, they didn't really have that structure that would ensure that they could get things done, and they certainly didn't have the ability to have courtesy and compromise. It was, you know, it was just a mob, some delightful people, you know, I mean, some of these folks were wonderful, you know, the police got to be friends with some of them, you know, Billy Evans, who later became commissioner, said to me once, he says, Billy, you wouldn't believe what happened, he says, I'm standing there and this guy who's got, you know, hair down to here and a long beard comes and says, hey, soup superintendent, look, you didn't hear from me, but there's a guy in that tent over in the corner who's been selling heroin, I think he's got some hot bags, somebody's gonna get hurt, but I just wanted to let you know. And Evans said to him, all right, I didn't hear it from you, but they went into that tent, and they arrested a guy that had, you know, a lot of heroin and a long record of drug distribution and other things. But, you know, how a government or a body is structured can really dictate its effectiveness, and for all those constraints that all of you feel at times, working within the system, there's some value to it as well. It's a matter of nuance. And let's talk about strategic responsibilities, and of course, that chart on there means absolutely nothing, but I, you know, I wanted to find some stock photo of strategy and...
Bill, I'm watching our time.
Yep.
And I'm hoping we can get to slide twenty-one and work through some of that and also be able to give the board an opportunity to ask you direct questions.
Is twenty-one the code of conduct?
That's code of conduct.
Great, all right, so let's breeze through these, you know, just, you know, some of those things here, gotta have a clear vision, strategic plan, we talked about that, that earlier, you can inspire the public, you can set goals and milestones, lead positive change. That's a photo of me after the last Falmouth Road Race. Effective leaders make decisions based on fact, data, and logic, even when it's unpopular, and you guys have already experienced that, you've probably experienced it just in your relatively short time, Heather, sometimes you make people unhappy, but you gotta do it, you know, you're trying to make a decision for the good of the entire community, the quality of life of the entire community, but you gotta demonstrate empathy and understanding as a leader, you can't be dismissive. Good leaders own their mistakes and learn from them, and they set the tone for the community with integrity, candor, empathy, courtesy. Community engagement, good community engagement includes, once again, respectful dialogue, accessibility, what Scott was asking about earlier, in-person telephonic virtual meetings and communications. You know, COVID really did throw everybody for a loop, there's been some great things as a result of it, but there's also been a certain detachment that's come with, you know, meeting people on a little square on a screen, and we lose something if that's the only accessibility that the public has, and, you know, I know you've got in-person meetings, but, you know, be aware of that need for accessibility. Awareness, represent everybody, responsiveness to inquiries and complaints. Media relations, we'll cover this real quick. Seek authorization from the chair or the board before speaking with the press. It's a minefield, you know, I mean, this is something that can cause problems for you and cause problems for the board. If you are authorized to speak, don't ever lie. Better to say, I don't know, or I really can't get into that, because if you lose credibility with the press by lying, it will dog you. I, you know, I know reporters, I know some great reporters, I know some snakes, but none of them should be lied to, because it'll follow you around and it'll be bad for the board. Don't ever discuss board deliberations or positions, and this doesn't just go for the media, this goes for everybody. You know, don't be the one that's saying, well, you know, we're, you know, we're three to two right now, I think, but, you know, that could change at the next, I mean, don't get into that, or, you know, don't say, you know, that particular member is a problem on an issue, it's not fair to your fellow members, you don't want them talking about you like that next time when you're in the minority. And don't discuss employee personnel or disciplinary issues. I saw this so many times where a counselor was being overly helpful, and the next thing you know, they're on a witness list for an employment action, you know, or an MCAD action. Don't, don't get into those things, you know, particularly if it looks like you're bad-mouthing an employee, you know, or revealing information that, disciplinary information that may be confidential, or at least not in the public eye. Speak clearly and understandably with minimal jargon or board speak. You know, I mean, this is something I saw with the military all the time. If I had more time, I'd give you an anecdote on that, but, you know, gotta make sure that everybody understands what you're saying, you know, at the highest level as well as the execute level of the employee, so that there's no misunderstanding. And finally, treat the press with respect and understand that reporters have a job to do. Okay, now let's get into the code of conduct. This is gold, you know, I mean, before I knew you had a code of conduct, something I was gonna recommend to you, and, you know, this is one that needs to be fine-tuned continually, but this is a great pocket document for you to have in how you carry out your role individually and collectively as board members and as a board, and, you know, and number five, how the chair conducts her business. So let's just talk about the first one, your relationship with the community, just gonna, some of these we've talked about, but they're worth reminding you of and emphasizing, because as Nancy says, this is, you know, this is important. Policy, not administration. That's your relationship with the community. We've talked about a lot of this, you know, being accessible, you should be, being empathetic, you need to be, but also making sure that you're not getting out of your lane. Be a good teammate. You know, I mean, the support I've seen in this room already... You know, I mean, the support I've seen in, in this room already just, you know, demonstrates to me that this is, this is a team. You know, you all have, have some differences, I'm sure, you've got some priorities that may be different, or some styles that may be different. But, you know, that's, a good team takes advantage and learns how to, how to leverage those different perspectives and backgrounds and, and everything like that. What the chair was talking about earlier, I think during the break, about, you know, some of the, the backgrounds and skills that, that each of you bring that others may not have, that might be enlightening.
I think B is like one of the most important things that we do, because it sets the example for all the other committees, because, you know, we always, always don't always get our way. But once the board makes a decision, we do all stand behind it.
Yeah.
And that kind of leadership is important for other groups, because they all have that same thing. They don't, one person doesn't get their way. And if they're going around the coffee shop saying, oh, those other people don't understand, you know, that just doesn't work.
Yeah.
Doug, I think you exemplify that more than any of us. I think it, it's an admirable trait that you have.
Oh, thanks.
Yeah. And, you know, that's not just a lesson for this board or for town government, that's a lesson for society.
Right.
You know, you can't always get your way. And, and, and sometimes, you know, you got to be a community member and, and acknowledge that, you know, I didn't get my way, but, you know, for the good of the community, it's time to move forward.
And out of respect for the body that you're a part of.
And you, and you do have a voice, and your voice is through your vote.
Right.
Right? And even when you lose the major vote, right, because maybe I voted no and everyone else voted yes, that's, that's still okay, that's my voice.
Yeah.
Once that decision's made, you get behind the vote.
And when we go to a meeting and somebody says, you know, what's the board's position on that? You don't say, well, I felt like this, but they said that. You just say, the board voted this. That's what it is.
Yeah, because you lose legitimacy if they think you're a fractured board.
Right.
They think, well, you know, I, I didn't get my way, but it sounds like, you know, at least, you know, some people were on my side, I'm going to dig my heels in, you know, and, and maybe they'll come around to me, you know, next time.
Because I'm the only one that's right.
Yeah, because I'm right, yeah. Stay informed of your role and of board issues. You know, you want the, the community to believe that, as you do, and I can see already just how conversant you are in these issues, this is important. And, and you're not just walking into a, a meeting and looking at, you know, the agenda for the first time, or, or, you know, having no idea what the, the key issues are that are going to be discussed, or that there's going to be comment on. Stay informed of your role and, and of the issues, and represent the entire community. Not segments, you know, you don't have district members, but, you know, just based on my experience with Boston City Council, it, it creates a, a friction that becomes, you know, very difficult to, to deal with. You know, of course, city council, you've got, you know, 13 people who think they're auditioning to be mayor of the city of Boston. Unfortunately, yeah. Unfortunately, some of them are auditioning for a prison suit, as we've seen over the last couple of days. And finally, be an ethical leader. You know, model good ethics, avoid conflicts of interest, avoid even the appearance of impropriety. All right, so your relationship with the town manager, we, we've talked about some of this, but, you know, understand the board's role as policymaker and the manager's role as administrator. You know, it's, it's, it's very easy to get out of your lane, and, and, and not just as select board members, but anybody in, in town government. It's not helpful to the process. You know, and, and you can accomplish the same things by acting as, as a good teammate and, and acting collectively, and, and bringing your, your teammates, your, your fellow board members into a discussion that you think is, is, is worth, worth pursuing. Stay in your lane, observe the chain of command, and allow the manager to discharge his responsibilities. I mean, and, and I don't know what the, the dynamic is, is here, but I know, not just from that Mass Maritime example I gave you, but from, you know, my familiarity with, with other boards and, and with the, with the city, that you got to let the people that are not only empowered with duties, but obliged by those duties, to carry out those responsibilities and obligations. Don't directly provide instruction to department heads, work through the board and the manager. It drives department heads crazy, because they're caught in the middle. They know that you guys are in, in many respects, you know, the boss of them, but they also know that the, the town manager is the one that's, that's administering them. So you put them in a tough position, you put the town manager in a tough position, and, and it's not for the good of the board.
And this is something that I think needs to be highlighted with other committees as well.
Yeah.
That committees do not go to town department heads. They go through the manager. And that has been a little bit of an issue as well.
It's an interesting thing, though, that whenever we do the town manager evaluation, no matter what template you find, it says, how well does the town manager interact with department heads? And we really don't know that. I mean, we can go and just talk to them and say, you know, how's things going, you know? Do you feel like you're supported? Do you have a good, solid budget that's, you know, supported?
Yeah.
And you can ask those kind of questions, but it's a little uncomfortable for the, the department head. And I don't really do it. I feel like I know the town well enough that I don't really have to do that, and I can read the budget, I understand. But how would that work?
You're also not given that direction.
No, it's only asking if there's, you know, if things are going well, if they think that...
You know, I think that's fine, but I think, I think it's got to be transparent. You know, it's got to be something that the board is made aware of, that the town manager is made aware of. You know, I, you know, I, I'd love to talk to some people, because a part of our duty is to, to, you know, assess your, your interaction, not going to interfere with it. You got the ball, town manager. I think that the key, Doug, is to come up with the best way to do that. So nobody feels, especially these guys, that there's been an end around on them, because that just makes their job that much more difficult. But, you know, I think there are processes that you can put in place, you know, whether they're in-person or, or written processes, but something that, that's fair to everybody, but where, you know, you're, you know, you can carry out your, your duties to, to see if that relationship is, you know, a, a good one.
That's the tricky part.
Yeah.
I just want to throw something else.
Yeah.
From my perspective, again, I, I have worked for some boards over 32 years that, that have gotten into the weeds and have gotten into giving direction to department heads and line-level stuff. After 18 months, I can say that's not been the case here, honestly. I think what, what Nancy said earlier about, I think the focus and the emphasis needs to be on perhaps in the boards and committees. And I, honestly, as we sit here, I don't know the best way to do that. But, so I have not, from my, from my experience, had an issue with any of the five select board members interfering day-to-day operations. It's more the issues and challenges and struggles I've had as the manager is, you know, perhaps in boards and committees, doing that, having that. And look, I'm all for accessibility and, and dialogue and channels and lines of communication, but when, when I have committee folks telling staff, department heads, do this, do that, that's when I have an issue with. Because it, it, it makes Peter's and my job more difficult, right? Because I think Peter alluded to it earlier, you know, we have, we're supposed to have a better sense of, in terms of workload and priorities. You know, I answer, Peter, to the five select board members, so it's our job to kind of triage those duties. When an, when, not an outside, when a committee member, board person starts directing day-to-day affairs and actions of department heads and other folks, that starts to break down the system.
And that's unfair to the department head, too, because they don't know where it's coming from. They don't know that they're working on the authority.
Yeah, and Bill said, it puts them in a bad situation, because they, they want to be respectful and...
Caught in the middle.
Folks over decades have good working relationships with these boards and committees, and I, that's great. But we just have to do a better job, my office delineating and explaining to these board and committee folks what their responsibilities are and where that line is.
Now, my understanding is there is a committee handbook. And isn't that drafted by the select board or under the auspices?
I think so.
In this case, it was Judy Fenwick's idea, and she offered to do the editing, and Peter and I and Judy collaborated, and we periodically bring it to the board for review and consideration and suggestions.
I think it would be a great thing to highlight that relationship.
Right.
You know, you know, do not go directly to department heads, you know, but have something in that handbook, if, if there isn't already. And I, I don't recall if there is, I took...
And that has to be in direct correlation with whatever our handbook is, too. So it's the same language.
I agree.
Well, maybe the thing to do is just to clarify the policy, is that, you know, you work through your select board liaison and your select board and your committee, and, you know, they're, they don't have a direct line to, you know, working with department heads and so forth.
Maybe your department heads, that's it, with their responses. You need to work through your liaison.
That's another piece, have you gone through?
And use the handbook.
Right, and make reference, because there it is. So you've had notice, right?
Yep.
Again, not wanting to get into the weeds, but I, but I do think that, that if there are those types of issues, that, that it would be helpful for the select board as a body to know if, if there is an issue with respect to something that might be going on with one committee or another, so that we're aware of, of that in case we get questioned by someone out there, hey, what's going on? So, listen, I appreciate how hard the job is and, and all that's going on in the town manager's office, but I, I think sometimes, you know, I, I've expressed this, as, as you know, since I've been on the board, and sometimes we hear things, you know, read them in the newspaper, hear things. And, and I think there, there needs to be a little bit more information that may need to come to the select board, not on everything, and certainly not on the weeds of, of anything, but just to know, you know, what, what, what may be going on that may become, you know, an issue of some import.
I'd love to be able to talk, and maybe this will be a topic of another conversation, kind of the mechanics of that, Bob. Because I agree, I mean, communication, and I know exactly, you know, the, the, the topic you're referring to. You know, my struggle with that, and again, it's 20 years, you know, as a senior accounting manager, how to, you know, relay that information so that it doesn't become subject to, you know, a, a records request. How do, how do I get that information out to you all, disseminate that information? So it could be, I'm a big proponent of, you know, what one of you gets, everybody gets, so I try to do that. But when we have issues like this, let's talk about the mechanics.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I understand the constraints.
Yeah, and we have an issue right now, we have a big issue right now that we need to...
Yeah.
But again, it's how you get it to people. It's, Scott and then Heather?
You may refer to the media. We, we generally don't have counter arguments with the media, but we've all experienced probably, the media has one, one, one approach to this, and that's it, and there's no way to rebut it. So that's the only information that the town folks get. And I think that's all convoluted.
I don't know if it's only through the media, but that's...
I didn't say only.
Yeah.
I said, but you made reference.
I didn't make reference to the media. I didn't say the media.
You just did.
No, I don't think I...
You hear stuff through the media.
No.
You did. You, you said, you, you said, sometimes we hear things about, for the first time, through the media.
Oh, yeah, that I said.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, that, that I said.
Could be totally off-base.
Right.
So trying to bridge that gap is what I'm trying to get to, how do we do that?
And there are a whole lot of layers.
Right, oh, absolutely.
And I, and I don't want this board that I report directly to and responsible to, to ever be blindsided, and, and again, going back to, so, so that's something that needs to be worked on.
That's all, I just want to throw it out there, because I think it's something we need to work on. And I, but, but I, at the same token, understand the constraints, you know, public meeting and public records and, and a lot of other things.
So that was timing, too. So that, some of what was released, you know, was timed.
Understood. I just wanted to get it out there as, as something, I think, as an issue, that's all.
But I, I think this, go ahead.
Heather, did you have something you want? I thought I saw your hand.
Yes, a little bit different, so if there's...
What I was going to say is, I mean, this sounds like something where you're in need of a process, you know, whether it's a carve-out of time for in-person, look, these things are going on, or, you know, something that, you know, could very well be a public records request, so you want to be careful about it. You know, you could carve out a time at a, at a regular meeting, but you know that that's going to all be public.
Right, right, right.
If it's something that's an executive session thing, it, it, it's got a different dynamic to it. It's a little bit easier to do it, but, you know, not knowing the specifics of this thing, I...
I've had colleagues that, and maybe this is a solution, we'll talk again, we'll run out of time, but colleagues of mine have suggested, because we talk, managers, that, you know, you have one-on-one meetings, you know, periodically, bi-weekly meetings.
Yeah.
It's a lot of time, it's a lot of your time, it's a lot of my time, Peter's time, but having those one-on-one meetings, again, allows the information to get out there.
Yeah, there's no deliberation.
Yeah, just a thought.
Exchanging information.
I can't tell you how many times I've almost picked up the phone to ask for a meeting, and then I said, no, he's got too much going on.
Other folks have done that effectively, so that's, that's something we can talk about appropriately.
That's good to know. Heather?
Um, maybe kind of nitty-gritty, but when we were talking about committees and committees being one source of this, you know, kind of going directly to staff members, the, the thing that came up for me is, well, each of those committees has a staff member assigned to it, right? And is, is that creating some of that confusion that...
Not all.
Not, not all, but, but many, but many of them do. So I actually pulled up the committee handbook, and there's not a lot of guidance on that, except that in one place it says, request assistance from town staff only through the staff person assigned to the committee. So maybe there's some clar- clarification there in the committee handbook about that, that relationship and the right channels to go through in terms of...
And the, the part of the struggle for me is when a, a committee person calls Peter McConerty, because they have something that we're on, and they want the DPW involved tomorrow, and this is what you need to do, and that is completely inappropriate. And it puts the, the department head, and I'm just picking Peter out of a hat, but it puts the department head in a position where he doesn't want to say, no, no, or, but it makes a really, really difficult position, because it, what it does is it goes around your office, goes right to one of your department heads. The department head doesn't want to, you know, necessarily kick back...
Right.
Or say no, but the department head needs to have language to say, no, this is not how it works, the process is you go through another office. Or, or through you, the, the, the town person that works for that, that board. But that hasn't, there are a couple of committees that are not doing that, and it is, has created a mess.
Is it appropriate for us as liaisons to question whether the, the committee has read their handbooks?
Oh, yeah.
And to require that? I, I suggest that you refer to your handbook, and you may find the answer you're asking right there, through the chair. You know, as part of, I mean, is that appropriate?
I think to always refer back to something that's in writing that has been distributed is always appropriate.
Right. That's a new tool there.
All right, anything else? All right, so next item is your relationship with fellow board members. We've talked about some of these before. It's government by committee, not by individual. Don't prejudge your vote or position until hearing comment and deliberations. Very easy to pontificate outside of a meeting or in a meeting before information has come in that, that is going to inform you on, on your vote or deliberations. Don't violate the confidentiality of executive sessions, this can get you in hot water. Don't discuss the position of a select board or individual member without authorization, we've talked about that. And finally, treat other members in their differing positions with respect. I mean, seems like that's pretty evident to each of you. All right, town staff. Treat staff with professionalism, clarity, and honesty. You know, once again, the whole world is watching how you treat staff. They deserve to be treated with professionalism and with candor. Work through the board and the town's chain of command in seeking information, and keep the manager informed. Don't criticize individual employees in public. These take on a life of their own, you know, and all of a sudden, you or the board are being bad-mouthed in places that you never knew existed, or things get taken out of context because you, you made an offhand comment that was misconstrued. You got to be very careful. All staff support requests should go through the manager. And finally, share communications from staff members with the entire select board. And then finally, the chair's relationship with the public, the board, and town staff. Nancy's responsibility, probably the primary one, is drafting meeting agenda based on the chart. the charter, the strategic plan, and the bylaws. In other words, they're grounded in the rules. Be responsive, being responsive to requests from other board members for information and, you know, requests for something to be an agenda item. Being consistent and fair in conducting and leading the meeting. You don't want one particular board member or member of the public or committee member to feel like they're not getting the same courtesy or attention as someone else does. And then finally, serve as the spokesperson on behalf of the board unless it's delegated to someone else. But, you know, the overall thing you should take away from these is that beyond planning and overseeing the board's meetings, the chair does not have special authority or power. But obviously, this is a very important responsibility or a series of responsibilities, you know, especially on the meeting side, but also the acting as spokesperson with the media and with the public. But, you know, Nancy is, you know, the same as every other member when it comes to her power on the board. All right, so any questions on the code of conduct?
Does that also include the thermostat?
No, I totally control the temperature of the room.
I thought that was very authoritarian on her.
You know my theory. Reasonable, reasonable.
This microphone isn't working, or you hear my teeth chattering.
You wait till the end of the meeting to complain.
I'm only kidding.
So here's your opportunity to ask any questions, bring up any issues that we need to talk about, any further direction that we need.
We do have a handout. I don't know if you want to spend the time to do that now, or that's the.
Oh, the case study?
Yeah.
I think we, do we have our own case study? Is there anything brewing that we need to talk about as a group? No deliberations?
Brewing in respect to what?
Just in terms of, anything we want to ask Bill? Any direction that we need based on what you've learned today? How do we move forward creating our own handbook?
I don't know, one thing, we stay busy. I mean, there is a lot, a lot going on, and every two weeks comes, seems like every week now, you know what I mean? There's that much going on around here. It's hard. That right there adds its own level of anxiety, because all the overlapping things that are out of our control are all happening at the same time, you know what I mean? So I don't know how to get around that. You can't cut half our time. We would never get anything done. That's the only thing I think's brewing. I mean, it's just a busy, busy gig.
It's a busy gig. I think we're actually in a good place right now. I think when I came on in 2016, we had a lot of critics, and we had a lot of complainers, and I don't see as much of that, and I think we're accomplishing a lot.
I think turning the thermostat down may have something to do with that.
Peter, would you please, Josh? Everybody's complaining except for me. I'm like perfectly comfortable.
And you've worked outside your whole life.
I'm not complaining. I just took note of that authority.
That is the one thing I can control.
I thought it was very comfortable.
The temperature. I can't even do that.
But, yeah, you guys have your hands full. I mean, this board is strikingly capable, competent, collaborative in your dealings with each other. You know, well, diverse backgrounds.
Right.
You know, I mean, you know, in my neighborhood, if an Irishman married an Italian, it would consider it a mixed marriage, so, you know, diversity has different levels. But, yeah, diverse backgrounds and perspectives, if you can make that work, you'll be a stronger body, just.
We've grown our public safety, you know, we've grown our fire department significantly with significant support from the public.
Yeah.
You know, we had to go for two overrides in a row because we didn't really quite have the first one figured out. We're coming up on probably having to consider an override for a police station or a dead exclusion for a police station, and potentially an override for police staffing, because, I mean, when we really get it figured out, I think we're going to realize we need quite a bit more. But I think that because of the respect we have for each other and the way that we've been managing things financially, I think the voters will still support that.
And these are transformative changes you're talking about.
Right.
With respect to the quality of life in Falmouth. Like, these are big deals. You know, I mean, this is, this is important stuff, and the role that each of you play in the discussion of these things and the vetting of these things, the deliberation of this deliberative body is critical. And, you know, the interactions you have with the town manager and his staff and with these committees, all of this, you know, it may not be pretty. You may feel like it's making sausage sometimes, but it's important and it's effective, even on those, you know, little pieces that Heather was talking about earlier, Bob.
You know, the interaction with the town manager. So if I have, send Mike an email. Right. You know, with respect to an issue or a question that may have been presented to me by a constituent or that I come up with myself. You know, should I share that with other board members? Is it proper to? I mean, I'm just kind of wondering.
If, you know, if the person's looking for you to do something or for action to be taken, you know, I think that's something you want to share. If it's just somebody saying, this town sucks, you know, I've had it, you know. I mean, people want to get things off their chest, and you may not even remember some of those comments, because, you know, you guys become a verbal impact area because of your visibility, because of your role. You become the one that somebody's going to unload on or commiserate with. You know, and some of that stuff, you know, particularly when it's family members that are doing the bitching and whining, you know, things you don't really want to bring, you know, into the public sphere. But if you've got an element of trust among each other, you know, or you think that the board might benefit from hearing some of these things, because they may not be made in isolation, then by all means, share it.
But being careful about how the board responds. Go ahead.
Well, I think that's the point.
That's the issue.
I don't think the issue is getting the information out to everybody. The issue is, you know, responding in a way that violates the open meeting law.
I think even the one-way transmission can be a problem.
It is. It 100% is.
Yeah, if it's geared towards deliberation, if it's geared towards bringing somebody over to a particular thing, I mean, the best thing is to go to the chair and say, look, this is what I've heard. Leave it up to you whether we make this an agenda item or make this an issue with others. I don't feel comfortable, you know, talking to the other select board members, because someone might construe that as being my attempt to get them on board a particular position on this thing, so what do you think?
And I think this board, some members may be more comfortable than others doing, but do pick up the phone. They'll pick up the phone, and I take the information, and then I bring it to Mike on Wednesdays. I, you know, the other thing is if, if you do send Mike an email about something you want on the agenda, if you would just include me, because what I have to make sure that I do, I'm always afraid I'm going to drop something, like I'm going to drop your issue. You told me three weeks ago about something, and so I make sure that I copy those emails. I make sure we, I bring them in, we go through every one of them to make sure that I don't drop. May not get on the very next week that, you know, after we discussed it, but I try not to drop your concerns.
And my policy is always, if I need something, I always send it to Mike and Nancy. If it's something I think Peter might have knowledge of or be of interest to him, I'll include him, but I don't do it every time. And I really don't ever bring it to all board members, because it's just, even if I'm just bringing up an issue, it sounds as if I'm pushing for it.
Right. And it's tempting to hit reply all. You know, there is that temptation, it's just automatic, that I want Bob to know what I think about it.
Right.
But in this role, we can't.
It becomes exhibit A.
We can't do it. Right. Right.
Yeah. Well, you heard my example of the open meeting law. I mean, that, of Mass Maritime Academy, that's what got, gave the admiral a lifeline, is the board had, in a non-meeting, had participated in what could be construed as deliberation about his tenure there, and because it was not appropriately posted, it was overturned. So things can be, you know, orders can be thrown out as a result of violations of the open meeting law, including email deliberations.
Just to be clear, and this just, when you keep bringing up Mass Maritime, some of you know that Eric is a board member on Mass Maritime Academy, but I did not get to Bill through Eric, so I want to be really clear that you were not recommended to me by a board member of Mass Maritime. I got the recommendation through a legal firm in Boston that I know really well.
Yeah.
Just want to be clear about that.
My question is, why didn't you get it through Mass Maritime? Obviously, they didn't think much of me.
I, oh. Okay.
There are entities out there that look solely for process mistakes or process.
Oh, absolutely.
Oh, we've.
As retaliatory.
We've been caught in that before.
A lot.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I think.
Better than that doorway. You know what I mean?
I think the only safe way to avoid that violation is the board does not email each other, email the entire board.
I'm a witness.
You can copy, you know, one member can copy the chair, but I think our guidance has been the only safe way to assure we don't violate the open meeting law is board members simply never email a quorum of the board.
And remember, with the open meeting law, with public records requests, good intentions are irrelevant.
Even the placentries don't.
You have to be careful.
I will say that when people ask me for stuff in public, I always refer them to just say, hey, send it the letter to selectboard@falmouthma.gov, because then we all see it, we're all aware of it, and we're all, you know, have an opportunity to consider if it's something we want to take up.
And you're good about answering within 24 hours of we receive your.
Yeah, that goes out automatically, but I agree, Doug. I think it's, if you put it back on the person who has the issue and they send a letter to the whole board, it becomes part of the record. Everybody sees the same information.
Absolutely.
And then we talk about it, and I think that makes perfect sense.
Because a lot of times people say, should I go talk to the town manager? And I say, no, he's busy. Just send an email, and we'll take it up.
I don't. I say, sure, go.
Open the door.
Call the town.
Open his door.
And while you're at it, give him a message from me. While you're at it, give him a message from me.
That's right.
Heather, go ahead.
Just in terms of agenda setting, one thing I really appreciated in the Lexington Select Board Handbook that you asked us to take a look at was the schedule for the year that's laid out in that in terms of, like, month by month, what are the responsibilities and topics that the select board needs to take up, which I thought could be really useful.
We actually have.
And we do have that. We have that calendar.
Is it?
We'll send it to you.
We do have it.
Is it on the website?
Well, it doesn't show the topics, but there are, the topics are designated because they're timely.
Yes. That's the one that we.
There is one that you.
There is one that you have, because they're time-sensitive, you have to do them this month, this month, this month.
Actually names the committees that will be likely to be presenting and so forth. It's not always 100%.
But it, and it doesn't have every, any, every agenda item on it, because it can't.
It's fluid.
Right?
The agenda's fluid.
I mean, I think both in terms of a resource for the board to have, but also as a public-facing resource, so that folks have a sense of, you know, these are the things that we know that we have to take on and when.
Is that not on the website?
We talked about, Peter and I recently have had a conversation about, which calendar was that, right? We were talking to town council recently about, there's a dialogue with town council.
Was it the, not the, not the select board meeting agenda or meeting schedule with the holidays in it? That's the only one that I was.
Diane has it, because she's the one who knows how, which committees are going to be presenting.
Exactly.
So we could, I have no issue with, I think it, for the transparency and the public-facing.
It's good to also show them that we actually know what we're doing in six months.
And that you have to do it.
And we'll get ready to vote on it, so.
And then the other thing that we have that is sort of, goes on concurrently with that, is we work every Wednesday on projecting out, not just those things that are time-sensitive, but don't forget, for future meetings, we have these 15 items, and we, so that we can then figure out how we put those items into the schedule that works with the one that we published. So there is a lot that goes on, I think, and I guess I didn't know anything about this until Doug was chair and I was the vice chair, and I thought, I had no idea that all of that projecting outward was happening. You just don't know that if you're not, but anyway.
I don't ever remember being the vice chair, having any extra time on a Wednesday. It gets filled. I mean, you get there at 8:00 to 8:15, and it's already going.
And we're pushing it.
You go into the staff meeting, and we're going to go, I got one with staff.
We have to push it, yep.
Two and a half hours.
Any, okay, so let's talk about moving forward. We need to think about creating our own handbook, and how do we want to do that? Who wants to take that on?
I will.
You will?
Wow.
Okay, so with everything we've done today and all the resources, Bob, you will try, that would be awesome, and then at some point present it, and we can, that would be great.
Well, I like Lexington, so I think that's a good starting.
It is a good start. And we have our own, you know, you can take things from here, we have our code of conduct. Okay.
What about the committee one?
What about the committee handbook?
I know we talked about coalescing the information or at least cross-referencing some of.
You can use it as a kind of a template for a form.
But you also, as I think Scott's getting, you want to be consistent between the two documents.
I'd be happy to help.
The rollouts have to come out at the same time, so we're getting the same information at the same time.
That's great.
Yeah, I was just going to suggest, once, you know, once the Select Board Handbook is finalized, then let's cross-reference the two and see what clarifications and changes need to be made.
Because you can enforce policy if you don't advertise it, right, so.
Great.
Yeah.
Anything else from the board? Anything else that you want from Bill?
I want to thank Bill.
Would we utilize Bill to review the handbook?
Yeah, happy to.
In a position, I mean, is that something we might consider doing?
Yes, yes. And I think we did talk about that, Bill.
I've got a good lawyer. I always send business cards with me. But, yeah, don't hesitate to get ahold of me and get a sanity check.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah.
I think that's a great idea for outside. Thank you, Bill.
All right, this final slide here is a bouquet, and, you know, I think, I liked it so much, I quoted it verbatim. There are other things I quoted in verbatim that I probably could have made more clear, but making a difference is what you do here. And I won't read it to you, but I think what I've heard from you folks from start to finish in this workshop just, you know, vindicates this whole concept. You know, you're the face of leadership in the community, the face of governance in the community. People are looking at you, but you treat each other with respect.